Starting. Okay. So, the first order of business. I just heard from our cultural council applicant. Who's on at six fifty-five. Miss Dolan and she's down in room five. So. Oh dear. Is scrambling to get to a computer and. But I think she's got plenty of time to do that.
Yeah, I'm sorry for that miscommunication.
So, no, well, no, good, I think. I thought I told her where we would be. So we have two interviews for. The Water Protection Task Force and confirmation of the applicants that have previously interviewed. Or decisions by applicants who have previously. The first of those two interviews. Is a very familiar face to me. Jeff Kosh. And. Jeff, I welcome you to our meeting and.
Thank you.
I wonder if you could start us up with just describing a little bit about why you're interested in. This particular opportunity to serve in the town.
Well, because I would like to work with you again for the first time since kindergarten.
Not your kindergarten.
Jeff was an assistant technology leader when I was volunteering with Paul Clark, is that right?
Yes.
I, I, I'm just, I'm an engineer with a lot of curiosity and I walk around town all the time out in the woods and. I'm pretty familiar with. The water resources in our area. And. Other towns in the area. And just that curiosity of knowing. Where things flow, I've looked a lot of maps, a lot of charts, studied the various. I forget the exact name online, but to see where the water flows and. I've read the. The Witten Report, Horst, Horstley Witten, is that name? So I've just always had an interest in. How things work and I think I could help out.
In general, just having made your way through the Horstley Witten Report would qualify you to do this.
I actually did go through the, because I was looking for a few things like where the. Where that water comes into gravelly pond, is that, how often is that supposed to come in from that well, et cetera, et cetera, so. Things like that and then. On the Hamilton side with the road that's going through there, I was looking through their DPW situation and. Just always been curious, you know, the, the way the Ipswich River flows and it comes down through that canal and then. Gets pumped back up to the reservoirs and how many towns that feeds, so I've just. Been curious and I, I just think I might be able to contribute.
Great. Okay, so let me open this up to other board members who have some questions for you.
If I may, Jeff.
Hi Becky. Becky.
Hi Jeff, Jeff.
Hi, how are you?
I remember those days as well and.
Yes.
First of all, I would like to say thank you for. Raising your hand for the task force and do you have any time constraints that might? Make it difficult for you in the evenings? Or maybe some like early afternoons?
I'm more flexible than I've ever been these days with three girls out of the house, so. I have less constraints than I used to and I have a flexible work schedule, so I think I could accommodate most all meetings.
Wonderful, and I would have asked you a little bit about the, the report, but you've already talked about that. So, thank you, Jeff.
You're welcome.
Yeah, if I, if I may, Jeff. Jeff and Jeff. Yeah, good, Jeff, I also want to thank you for volunteering for this, I'm, I'm the representative on that, on this task force from the selectmen. And Becky did ask about the time flexibility here. It's, it's hard to predict exactly, I, I think what, what, what the overall time burden is going to be. But I think one can be accurate in saying that. The commitment will, there will be times where I think it will be kind of intense, other words, it'll, it'll go in fits and starts. You're probably familiar with that as an engineer, I'm not sure exactly what your. What your background is in terms of working, but I, I can see there will be times where, yeah, you're gonna have to put some time in, not for a long time, but. Pretty intense, you have that kind of flexibility, your kids are out, as you say.
Yes, and also like you referenced, I mean, I, my work, I'm a computer and electrical engineer and I write software and. Sometimes we get into trouble and have to go twelve or eighteen hours in a row to get something done, so. You know. I, I'm, I'm pretty familiar with the town. I haven't. Guess I haven't served on any official town boards, I've been involved in quite a few different things. The various committees to build the new schools. Interview committees for those things, interviewing. Coaches for the sports programs. Working on other various ad hoc committees, I would call them.
Okay, well, with, with kids out, it's a great opportunity to get involved with the community and. See how town government works, so thank you very much for volunteering.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
No, I'll just say thank you for stepping up and volunteering, I'm pretty familiar with. You and your history and thanks for offering to help out.
You're welcome.
If I may, Jeff.
Sure.
What did you find in the Horstley Witten Report that you think most needs updating?
Well, I didn't really.
What, what do you know that from outside sources that we think?
I, I didn't really read it with, with the idea of updating it, although I obviously saw before I knew about this whole committee, I, I read it. A while back before I, I knew about this, it was obviously a little out, out of date. But. One of my biggest curiosities is. How gravelly pond is actually fed and there's different discussions I've heard. About that and one is certainly, in the thing I mentioned before, that the well that's feeding it with the orange water that looks disconcerting to a lot of people at the beginning and.
From round five.
Curiosities about that. But I, to me, to my amateur studies, I don't believe that gravelly pond is, has much if any. Groundwater that just runs into it, so my. You know, I could be wrong. My presumption is there are springs feeding that and I didn't see a lot about that, about those. Exact details in that report, I would have thought that we would know. That that pond is seventy-five percent. Supplied by underground springs, but that's not clear, I mean, some people have said that well is what feeds it, so.
Thank you very much. Sorry to give you a quiz, but appreciate your answer.
Any other questions? Okay. All right, thank you, Jeff, don't go away. And we're going to. Also be interviewing Michael. And. Mike, welcome. And I will start you off with the same question that I asked Jeff. You have a very interesting background, but what, what is it that brings you to this particular? Area of town service?
Thank you. To the board and I appreciate the opportunity to be with you tonight. I'm originally from the Boxborough, sometimes referred to. Like Manchester Essex is Acton Boxborough and in. The early, well, I guess it would have been the early nineteen eighties, I was in high school. And my town's drinking water supply was contaminated by a company called WR Grace. And it was very interesting. To, to, to read in the newspapers and follow it. It inspired me to actually pursue the career that I have now, many, many years later. My interest comes from a science policy nexus, I started my career on the environmental science side of things, I worked for an engineering firm, GZA. Some of you may have heard of it, Town is some business dealings with them. And I had an opportunity to see the role that engineering and science can play and how to solve these very complex problems. For communities and there's nothing more precious in our community than our drinking water. And so I come at this from a position of wanting to understand what's happening to our town resources, particularly our water resources. And what we can do to preserve those resources for ourselves and our, our children.
Okay. I open this again to the board.
I, I might start, Jeff and. Mike, thanks, thanks for volunteering for this. Your reputation precedes you, you've got a background that is just about perfect for, for, for being able to, to, to move through all of the unknowns that we might come up with here. I, I just have a question and in fact, I did see you talk, I know that you were on a trip, I think to Antarctica a number of years so ago and I. Listened to a lecture that you gave and that all dealt with water issues and local flora and, well, it's not so much. Flora, I guess it's fauna that's down there, so. I, I know that you're well versed in aquatic, aquatic things. How's your, how's your time constraints? Because you're an attorney, I'm, you're a busy guy.
I appreciate that, I actually have an opportunity to be fully bipolar, I signed on to an expedition to the Arctic in August. Which, when you go to the Arctic, so I'll be gone for three weeks, middle of August through the beginning of September. But, but setting that aside. I do have my own law firm and I do make quite a few trips to Atlanta, I have an office in Atlanta, I have staff in Atlanta. I'm in DC, I've done some, I'm doing some work with the United Nations and so on and so forth, but this is home. Right, so this is, this right, right to the top of the priority list and I will do my best to balance my commitments to work. And the things that are important to me, that's just been a value that I've had for a long time. So I can make this work, I have some other commitments that you may be aware of, I'm involved with ECT, I'm involved with SEMA, I'm. Salem Sound Coast Watch. The, and. Issue with all of those is protection of our environment, so, and our, and particularly the water resources component of that, so I'll make it.
Great, I'm confident that you can organize things to do so.
Thank you.
Other questions?
If I may.
Go ahead, Ann.
What do you see? As the major areas that this task force should focus on?
I think watershed protection is probably the most important issue that we're facing. There's a lot of development pressure on the town and on our surrounding communities to include Hamilton and Wedham. And those development pressures are real and so understanding how. We can balance both the need for development and the need for the revenue streams that that provides on the one hand. And on the other hand, protecting the quality of our, of our resources and the quality of life in our town, I, I view that as the primary objective.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mike, go into one aspect to that a little bit more. Specifically, the, the issues around. Development and. Not so much necessarily from, well, well. The business of balancing development with. Need to protect, the need to protect our water resources areas. And what roles technology, newer technologies around. Building development may play into that and whether, whether or not you view it as something that can be balanced? Or something that needs to be treated by. More prohibiting development in certain areas or a combination of allowing development with certain constraints in some areas. What is your philosophy there?
It's a great question, thank you, Eli. I guess in, in the interest of disclosure, I should say that I represent national developers. In a variety of projects, I have developments in Florida, in California, literally all over the country that I'm working on. And in the reason I'm brought into those development projects is because I have an understanding of number one, the law that applies. But also understanding that the, 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 the way to be an effective developer is to engage in a positive way with the community. And find out what the community needs, what the community's concerns are and then finding a way to do what the developer wants to do. That is harmonious with the community and that community engagement. Is something that over the last almost thirty years now practicing law is something that not all developers do. They don't have that understanding of the community engagement component to it. And so what we rec, what I recognize in the concept, context of development is that. There are places that should be developed and redeveloped. And one of my specialties is redeveloping environmentally impaired properties, old gas stations, old factories, I used to be in-house at General Motors. We, we can take those properties and put them into productive use and get them back on the tax rolls, that's really a, an important thing because it drives a revenue stream to the town. On the other hand, in Massachusetts and particularly in this area, we drink our groundwater, so our groundwater resource is our health, that is our public health. And we need to recognize that when we pursue development objectives, we have to weigh those very carefully. As to the threat that they may pose to those resources. One of the things I learned very early in my technical career. Involving remediation and particularly groundwater remediation was an analogy that's used and you may have heard of it, it's called ink in a sponge, okay? When you contaminate your, your, your sponge, your, your drinking water supply. You get the ink in that sponge and you can ring that sponge a number of times and get most of the ink out. But in order to get that last hinge out, the cost just starts to amp up and becomes extraordinarily prohibitive. And so when we think about not only the contaminants that we're all used to and gasoline and this type of stuff. We're now dealing and looking at PFAS and PFOS that are incredibly low detection limits, we're talking about parts per trillion, twenty parts per trillion. I spoke with a scientist that I used to work with from MIT about this a few years ago and he said, Mike, we don't have the technology. To be able to get our detection limits that low and yet our health people are telling us that we have to. Look at this from that perspective, we need to be able to be at that threshold, so some of this is driving technology. Some of it is, is just saying, you know, this isn't the right place. There are too many resources here that could be threatened by this and so this isn't the right place for that development, maybe it's better over here, maybe we can get. More of what we want and need by framing our development around areas that. Propose less threat to our environment.
Okay, well, thank you very much, that was a detailed response.
Becky, any questions?
No questions, thank you, Mike. Certainly, obviously bring a good deal, I, I guess my one concern would just be. Availability, but since we're able to zoom, that probably. Would not be an issue.
It really is enormously helpful and for what it's worth, I, I've been going to court, Zoom Court, we call it. In, in a number of jurisdictions and it's made things much more efficient, you know, sitting around in a courtroom for four hours until you get called. Never seemed like a good use of time, but this is a way to interact, there are certain limitations to it, as we all know. I think we've all kind of shown our resilience by, by being able to step up and do this kind of thing. But I think it makes government more open and accessible to people, which is really important. I'm a big believer in transparency, particularly with government, so this is a, a great way to do it and yes, I. This is something that's of significant concern to me in our, as our town goes through these growth pains. Many of which are mandated by law. We're gonna have to think outside the box and we're gonna have to really be flexible, we're gonna have to find opportunities to, to. Do what we need to do in a way that's responsible, I'd like to be part of that solution.
Absolutely, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. We now have. Last, last meeting, we interviewed four candidates. Tom Keough, Ron Parker, Gordon Turner and Joe Sibella. Subsequently, Joe contacted me and. Sent an email to Greg and me saying that he was gonna withdraw his name from consideration. So we have five candidates and we have six open at-large seats. I know that. The task forces. Itching to go and have its, have its kickoff meeting. So tonight, we are going to forego our usual. Will let this sit, these two interviews sit for a couple of weeks and then appoint or not. And make a decision about the five candidates that we have. Tom Keough, Ron Parker, Gordon Turner, Jeff Kosh and Mike Carvalho.
Would you like motion?
I would be next.
Motion to appoint Ron Parker, Gordon Turner, Tom Keough, Jeff Kosh and, and Mike Carvalho. To the Water Resources Protection Task Force as at-large members.
And I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion from the board? Okay, so let's do a roll call vote. We'll start with Mr. Ballin.
Yes.
And Mr. Round?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Jakes?
Yes.
And Mr. Gordon Turner quotes, yes. So gentlemen. And I know Tom's here and I think I saw both Ron and Gordon's names. There's Ron and I think I saw Gordon's name as well, yep, there he is. So. The next step will be that we will, I'll send an email at the end of this meeting to. Steve Gang and he will be in touch with you, I know that they've been planning. For their first. Meeting, which will probably happen within the next week. And because this process took a little bit longer. The dog is on its way and you're gonna have to just follow it. I will, I will get in touch with Steve and let him know about your appointments, congratulations and thank you for. For volunteering to help the town out on this very, very critical task force.
It's a privilege, thank you.
And, and I would like to see this report in twelve months, not eighteen months, but.
I thought the three hundred and seventy-fifth was gonna be one year long too, so.
Yeah. There you go, Tom. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, members of the board. Thank you.
Okay, so. We have one more interview to do, which is for cultural council unless. Aaron, you wanna also put your hat in for at-large member, we have one more seat. I see the head going, no. Karen Dolan, welcome to the Board of Selectmen. And. Excuse me, and. You are. Candidate for the Cultural Council. And this is for a currently a two-year position that would be. Slightly more than two years, be ending in June of twenty twenty-four. And Karen, I typically start people off with what do you understand about the Cultural Council and what you're interested in serving?
Yes, thank you very much, can you all hear me? Can you hear me okay? Great. Yeah, I, so I did attend the Cultural Council meetings in November and December. When they went through the grant applications and they assessed them based on the criteria of the Culture Council on how they fit with supporting the community and. You, you know, and describing what they were going to do and where they were gonna do it and, and saw how the, the funds that were available were distributed to each of the, the different grants and. So my understanding. Was kind of informed by going to those meetings as well and I know that it's a kind of a grassroots way to help. Distribute funds to people who are supporting the community with arts and science education and, and activities to enrich the town and that just really excites me to be able to contribute. To activities like that to help give back and, and, and see funding going out to help, to help the community.
Great, okay. Any questions from the board?
I do, if I may.
You may.
Hi Karen, thank you. My, it's, it's my usual question just about time, if you, if you have any time constraints that might impact your ability. Be on the board.
Well. Yeah, I, so I'm working from home right now, we are going back part-time in the spring. But I have time, I know that the meetings that the Culture Council has are generally in the evening, so I certainly can attend those and contribute. To those meetings, so, and it, it's something I would definitely make time for to, to make sure that I was there and supporting it.
Thank you.
Jeff, if I may.
Sure.
Yep. Karen, thanks for, thanks for volunteering, just curious, as you've attended one of the meetings. Is there any particular area in the area of quote culture, unquote, that particularly is, is of particular interest to you that you would want to pursue and as, as being part of this board that is to say, I don't know, science or. Music area, the arts or. Literature or something like that, I'm not sure, culture is a pretty broad-based thing. I was curious what your key interest is.
Yeah, the, there were a variety of grants, there were for young children up to adults that were. That were made for the last round and, and all sorts of fields, including science and entertainments and like puppets and music and whatnot, so. I don't really have a, a particular interest, it's just really interesting to hear what people are volunteering to, to try do and what kind of grants people are trying to make, so. At the, at the meeting. It was really. Or one of the focuses was trying to get, make sure that a variety of different communities were served and with a variety of different subject matters, so. I would say I would not really focus on any one particular. Piece, I think art and science and music and, and exploration of, of all the different, you know, wonders of the world, they're all kind of equally important to try support.
Okay, thank you.
Jeff, if I may.
Sure, go ahead, Ann. Sure, go ahead.
Um, what other civic organizations have you worked with?
Um, I have not worked with uh other civic organizations. I'm a software developer for online uh students and distant students at at Harvard right now, so I'm kind of in the educational uh field in general. But I I have not done town work before.
Thank you. Good luck with it.
Thank you.
Uh, Jeff, I'm I'm all set. Uh, John actually covered the questions I I was interested in.
I'm curious, Karen, if you could spend an afternoon at any museum in the world, where would you go?
Oh, my goodness. Um, I really like.
Now, this is a critical question, so be careful.
There are lots of really wonderful museums around, um, and I have not explored all the the museums that are that are wonderful and and the opportunities around. Even in Manchester, I have not been to all the different opportunities to explore. And that was part of the cultural council is actually to try advertise, you know, what they're doing and so that more people are aware of it and aware of the opportunities around the town, which I think is actually really important as well. So so I guess I don't really have a favorite. I think uh I think there's a lot of exciting things going on in Massachusetts in general and in the North Shore too, Cape Town.
So you wouldn't say the glass flowers?
Glass flowers at Harvard. I do like those.
Just just wondering, because people from Harvard are listening in time. Okay, um. I know that the cultural council um meets on a monthly basis. Um, I'm not sure when the next meeting is. Would we uh like to wait until our meeting on the twenty-second to make a decision about Karen, or would you like to uh extend a motion tonight?
I would be willing to entertain and willing to propose a motion tonight.
And I would second that motion that would be proposed tonight.
Then we need to propose that motion.
I propose that we appoint Karen Hoxton to the cultural council and with our great thanks.
And I second that.
Okay, I see a lot of smiling faces here. Um, any further discussion? All right, roll call vote.
Um, friendly amendment? For the term for the term that will expire June of twenty twenty-four.
Is that okay? All right. The reason that we're being really specific about that term, Karen, is um that the uh cultural council has nine members and they're kind of all clumped into having terms that expire on two different years and not three. So we're trying to get that realigned. And it's not anything about you that's specifying that it's a twenty twenty-four term. Um, okay, I'll take a roll call vote. Uh, Ms. Jakes?
Yes.
And Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Round?
Yes.
And Mr. Bowling?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So congratulations, Karen. Thank you for uh stepping up. I think it's a great idea to get out there what the cultural council is doing, because it's not a committee that a lot of people in town even know. And um advertising, uh, writing up for the cricket, uh, working with Tiffany Marletta, who's our communications person. Um, maybe ideas that you wanna bring to the council for their consideration.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, so it's seven oh five.
Sorry about town hall.
Yeah, yeah, sorry about town hall.
Jeff, if I may?
Yes.
I just wanna, I know we're a little ahead of the schedule by a couple of minutes, but um that we didn't ask for public input on items not on the agenda. Is that something we're gonna do at the end?
I had intended to do that.
Okay.
But I, we could do that now.
I I just I just wanted to make sure we did that at some point.
Yep, I I had intended to do that at the end.
Okay, thank you.
We have items, public input on items that are not on the agenda at the beginning, and then we have um, other matters. This may not have been recently anticipated by the chair at the end, but um I would entertain any public input on matters that are not on this agenda. Um, if there is a member of the public who wishes to raise one of those.
Hi, Jeff, it's uh Jay Bothwick.
Yes.
How are you?
Good.
So um, it it's uh come to my attention that um that there is some um potential discussion ongoing about um having John Witten come on board for the zoning board of appeals as counsel. Um, I think everyone on this board is aware of John's qualifications. He's the best forty B lawyer in the state. Hands down, he has that reputation. If you ask anyone who practices in the area, look at what he does in public uh speaking seminars. You see the way everyone defers to him. Um, I think that um zoning board of appeals is in a very difficult situation, as this board knows, um, facing the the SLV proposal. And I think the board, this board was well-served by John and his advice. And I think the ZBA would be similarly well-served with John's advice, and I would strongly encourage uh this board to um do whatever is possible to have John come in and actively assist uh in that process. I think it would benefit the town, whether you are in favor or not in favor of this project. I I think it is undeniable that it is something that could have perhaps have one of the um most far-reaching impacts on this community, given the size and the scale. Um, we've never faced anything like it before as a community. It has many facets. And I think not taking advantage of the best resources that are available um, from my perspective, um, is, you know, frankly, not the right course. And so I would I would encourage this board to do so. I have understood that people are concerned about um potential conflict. I I can say I was, many of you know, I practiced law at a large firm for forty years. Um, if there are conflicts, they don't apply to lawyers. They apply to firms. It may arise from a role that an individual attorney played in a prior matter. But if there truly is a conflict um for a lawyer at a firm, that conflict disables the firm, not just the lawyer. So I don't think there is truly a conflict here um that would preclude Mr. Witten's service.
Okay, so again, I I need to say, ask you to stop. Um, because this is not something that was on the agenda, so we cannot deliberate on it tonight.
Okay, that's fine. I I I thought this was an opportunity.
I understand what your concerns are. I understand what your concerns are, but um, I
we, thank you.
We we cannot get into a discussion about the pros and cons of this issue tonight.
Understood. Okay, thank you.
I I will be clear that uh these matters will be discussed in in uh in a future meeting of the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Sarah Creighton, please.
Um, good evening. Uh, Sarah Creighton, um, I'm coming as vice chair of the planning board simply to remind you that um we had sent a letter requesting town council's review of the amendments that were proposing for the limited commercial district. I did not see it on your agenda tonight, but um I don't want it to get lost in the many things that you have on your plate. So um we, I will resend it to you, uh, Jeff, um, tonight, and we, because we have a slightly different version. But um simply just to uh ask the board that we get council's review of that important zoning change, um, particularly as it relates to other matters in the LCD. That's all. Thank you.
And that's a specific zoning change, or is that the whole project that you?
No, our letter um indicated, we we sent a letter to you. It was simply to have town council review the proposed changes for the LCD that I believe you're gonna hear about um the um cell signaling proposal tonight, and the two people have asked us how those changes might affect um, the L uh other changes in the LCD, other um projects in the LCD, specifically SLV. And so when we go to our public hearing, we wanna be able to answer that with council's advice rather than just our opinion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, I have other email from you regarding the twenty-second um, and the presentation of where you are with the other amendments.
We'll be back.
Or changes in bylaw. Oh, yeah. Okay, um, thank you. Okay. I'm going to suggest that we move on. And our next topic uh brings Mr. Alan Wilson um regarding the annual town meeting and um the agenda says the discussion about possible delay due to COVID um and FY twenty-three budget development updates. So um with, there he is. Hi, Alan.
Hello, Jeff.
Uh, there's been some discussion about this. Um, and I wonder if you wanna tee this up, or you'd like Greg to tee it up? You want me to do it?
I think it might be preferable if you or Greg did it.
Okay, um, Greg, do you want to uh? Well, why Greg, why don't you take the the budget development and I'll take the COVID aspect? Is that right?
Sure, I thought I thought we would do the COVID in timing first, and then we'll dive into the budget issues.
Yes. Um, all right, why don't you go ahead and do both? Go ahead and start with the COVID issue.
Okay, all right. So um, uh, normally our our town meeting, annual town meeting is the first Monday in April, which would be April fourth this year. Um, and obviously, the 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 big question is, what is the status of of COVID come come two months from now? Um, and the answer is, we don't know. So it's a a bit of a staring into the crystal ball and trying to make the best judgments we can. So the challenge is moving forward with town business and yet still being as um uh as careful we can as we can be with people's health and not putting in people at risk. Uh, we want people to participate in 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 town meeting. We don't want them to not participate because they're concerned about their personal health. Um, so that tends to say we should err on the side of caution um as as we try to schedule things. There is a a real desire to finish up our budget work by the first of May. Um, it would be helpful um having Manchester um weigh in on the district budget, in particular, the school budget um as it goes through its approval process. Um, I think that might be very helpful um for Essex folks to know where we stand before they vote. Um, so there there is a that competing need versus going as late as possible when we have the option of knowing that we can have warm weather and be outside if if we felt that that was necessary. The, so the ability to to defer from April fourth or so under the the governor's emergency orders for such a such a move. So you, as a board, could decide to push out the annual town meeting. Um, one option to consider is to um have the annual town meeting focus on the basics. Excuse me, that would mean, you know, the the basic budgets, town budget, school budget, capital budget, uh, community preservation budget, and a few of the miscellaneous budgetary votes that we take. And possibly the LCD as a amendment to the zoning, um, amending the LCD as part of our zoning regulations um apropos to a discussion we'll be having a little later this evening. Um, but we could stop there and make it um a pretty brief annual town meeting and hold off on all of the other issues, um mostly additional zoning amendments. There are um half a dozen or so, a possible possible amendments that want to be discussed, debated, and and voted on uh at a town meeting. It doesn't have to be the annual town meeting, but it needs to be at a town meeting. So an alternative would be to um delay the annual town meeting by a few weeks, go towards the end of April, just buying buying a little more time to to give COVID that much more of a chance to to fade away. Um, at least that's all of our hope and hopefully not a new variant coming roaring in again. Um, and then hold off on the bigger, longer debatable issues, most likely issues that are more heavily debated and will take longer for a time, perhaps in June, where if we need to, we could comfortably be sitting outside with uh with weather that would accommodate that. Um, so that's where we are. I know that um that you would like Board of Health uh to to weigh in on this. They are meeting this coming Thursday, and I believe we'll have it on their agenda. I know that um Dr. Han gave some preliminary input, and um he was the one who suggested this bifurcation. And we're ahead with two meetings rather than rather than one. That that's right, Greg. That that it came up in a conversation that I had with uh Dr. Han, who's a member of the Board of Health uh last week. Um, and um, he he actually posed it in the form of a question. Well, if if it looks like it's gonna be a very long meeting with the zoning proposals and everything else, could you split it into two and have the part of it later? And I said, well, sure, that's that's certainly a possibility. If we have an annual in April and a a special, say, in June, um, we could easily do that and preserve the option of having the uh the June meeting outdoors if we had to. There are significant advantages logistically in having it in the new memorial school space, because we would have a audiovisual capability that would allow us to display zoning amendments and make changes to them from the floor if we had them. Um, but if if public health risk requires it, we could go outdoors. So I I I, to me, you know, it's not, it's the selectman's call, but to me, having that divided meeting with the potentially longer discussion items, more controversial items postponed until June makes a lot of sense.
Okay. Um. I'd like to say that uh the discussion tonight is not to make a decision about which of these two options, uh whether those two options um should be implemented. Um, but to um get some reaction from the board about um your thoughts concerning splitting the meeting and putting some of the weightier items further down the line into June. Um, and doing a shorter delay prior to the end of April for our budget, primarily on budget, and another several other smaller items um or or less.
Jeff, Jeff.
Items with less discussion.
Yep, if I could, Jeff, one other comment?
Yeah.
Um, we haven't figured out exactly how much social distancing the space in the new memorial school would accommodate, but it looks as though we would be able, it it's a very large space when it's combined, the auditorium and the cafeteria and gym. And it looks as though we would be able to accommodate any any likely uh attendance for the annual town meeting with plenty of distancing. Haven't done all the calculations yet, but that's the preliminary. Haven't done all the calculations yet, but that's the preliminary look.
Okay. So primarily, we're looking at the concept tonight and of splitting the meeting. And giving us the sense of the board. About. Whether that's the direction you want to go in. For this. And I would entertain any comments from the board right now.
So if we did this, we would also then need to be pushing the public hearings for the planning board out a bit, correct?
Yeah, so we give the planning board a bit more time to. Prepare for the public meeting and. And have all the ducks in a row for that meeting.
Also, you want to push that out because once the planning board holds that public meeting, the zoning board can't hold anymore. Because of the scope of the changes here, I don't think the planning, the zoning board could then hold anymore hearings until the town meeting. Had concluded, is that correct?
That's my understanding.
Jeff, if I may.
Go ahead, yeah.
My concern is. Getting. A reasonable representative. Sample of the town's voters to attend a meeting that is exclusively zoning. It just seems to be very hard to get. Not to get a quorum, because our quorum is now quite small, but but to get. People excited enough to come out. For a balanced town meeting.
Okay.
Jeff, if I may. Unless you say something.
There are other items that are lengthy discussions. That. That would also. Be moved into the June meeting, including. A townwide discussion of dispatch. But your point's well taken here. As much as the planning board has been working real hard and is real excited about all the changes that they've been working on. The interest in this is probably. Not as as. I'm not going to, I'm not going to go down that road. Whether there's an interest or not, we don't know, but it may, it may be somewhat less enthusiastic than. All the town boards and officials who have been involved in this process.
Okay, as long as we don't have to put dogs on the on the on the warrant.
We can put dogs on the warrant, and then then we'd get another third of the town. So that would be that would be possible. We don't want to, but that would be possible.
Save it for the end.
Ms. Sharon, if I might just quickly ask a question?
Go ahead, Sarah.
I guess my only question is, if you are intending at all to stick with April 4th. It would be help, we actually would have to know tonight because of the timing for public hearings to get. I'm posting a notice the cricket tomorrow morning for. Given the calendar anyway, to get things to the warrant.
That that doesn't require a vote on. The actual logistics of this. As much as to say, this is our idea, this is where we're moving. We're not going to be going on April 4th. So I I understand, and I appreciate that comment in terms of timing for your public hearing. Any other comments from Boris?
Yeah, Jeff, if I may, I'm 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 in favor of splitting this into two because it's going to be two meetings, no matter what the story is. There's just a lot of stuff here, and whether it they're consecutive days. Or they're split out by. You know, a month or two, I don't, I we're still going to need all of that time. I think. I I'm a little bit worried, as Ann said, about. The dry nature of zoning. But I think we can, it seems to me, we can be strategic about what all of the topics are and make. A second day's meeting pretty interesting. I know Alan has probably looked at the numbers, but I've seen in past meetings the drop off in most instances. Has has been quite a bit. I don't, I'm not sure exactly what it is, but I know that. Second day meetings, second night is certainly not as well attended as the first, but.
Alan, how how many people do we have at the STM in the fall?
About 250.
Okay, so. It's not necessary that. Special town meeting has a big drop off in attendance. 250 is about what we get. Town meeting going up from there pre pre COVID. But since COVID, that's about what we've been getting at Tom.
Well, I I think that I think the pre COVID, the the median is probably around 400 or 450.
Right. But we don't have that era anymore.
Well, that's true. But. The the special actually got more people than the annual this year. And we've had specials where we've had. Granted, the 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 item was school regionalization and school construction, where we've had more than 800. So it's not so much special versus annual, it's what's on the warrant.
Okay. Any other board member comments before I go? I see your hand, Gary, and I see your hand, Sarah. Go ahead.
My, I I think it's a really creative idea to split it this way. My only concern would be in terms of what would be moved out to the second meeting. And if there was anything kind of along the lines of the school budget, which would go on the earlier one. But that would be time sensitive in terms of of potential. Grants or things along those lines, but I guess, Greg, you probably have a a bead on those.
Right, so I think that we would. We would do the vast majority of the money articles. In at the earlier meeting. What we would call the annual town meeting.
Yeah, that would read, that would be my only concern is just making sure that that. The time sensitive items. Requiring grants or whatever be the earlier one. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Any other board member comments? Okay, Gary.
Good evening. Maybe this is a bit of a small point, but someone made earlier about a reference to the zoning board of appeals. Once we start our public hearings to change some bylaws. It doesn't, I don't think people would have the impression that the zoning board of appeals can't have any meetings at all. I think they can, I think, and I'd like to get counsel to weigh in, maybe. I think that they can't have hearings on cases where we're changing the laws. And possibly they can't have meetings on in cases where they were changing the laws that are more restrictive, but if they if we're changing them to become less restrictive. I have a feeling we could, they could probably proceed and have hearings. So they're not frozen in time completely. I just didn't want people to get the wrong impression.
Okay, and and clarifying that to the town, Carrie, is a challenge. But I I get your point that there's going to be. Some things that are going to be open to to continued hearing. Some things that will be closed to continued hearing. And a gray area where it's become. The the change being re recommended is more expansive than. Previously, whether they want to go forward with their hearing.
And I believe we're trying to schedule our public hearings to be as tight as possible to that that three week deadline before when things go to print for town meeting. I think we're we're sort of basing our our public hearing schedule on that. It might be helpful if town council just did a little. Run through of our proposed bylaw changes, once they're a little bit more in order. And gave the ZBA and ourselves a heads up as to what are the kinds of applications that would be on hold for that five week period? It'd be helpful for people to know, I think.
Okay. Thank you, Gary. Sarah.
Yeah, not to. Not to beleaguer this point, but I think the question is for the planning board. Is how specific they need to be with respect to. The notice it needs to go in the cricket regarding the public hearing. So if they are just going to do the LCD. That doesn't impact us really, but if they need to have a specific agenda in their public hearing. Then I believe even if we delay the zoning. Portion to a later. Town meeting. That might adversely impact us, and I am just not sure about the specifics. But it it means that we would have to look at every single application and determine whether or not it was impacted. Which I'm not.
And you'd need some really clear guidelines from town council.
Exactly, before the notice goes to the cricket tomorrow.
Before the notice goes to the cricket tomorrow.
Yeah, I don't know what the impact is, is if the notice lists every single possible change to zoning bylaw. And then they get to the public hearing and they say, oh, we're not going to talk about X, Y, and Z. I don't know when the. I don't know what the implications are with the timing.
Mr. Chairman, I can clarify that a little bit.
Go ahead.
I think our intention is because the cricket ran an article about the LCD saying. That we would hold a hearing about it on February 28th. Our feeling is we should proceed with that. It's one of our regular meetings. But that if you're not going to have a April 4th town meeting, we will. Wait to have the public hearing on the other changes until that public hearing date is set, that town meeting date is set. And then we're back from work back from that. So. My, as Gary said, mindful of trying to keep everything as compact as possible. So I think our our intention right now is to simply. Hold the public hearing for the LCD changes on February 28th, but that also could get pushed out, but. You know, you actually have to work. It it takes a long time to get all the ducks in a row and get the thing to the warrant and and all that, so. But I to Sarah's question, we're not planning on, if town meeting is pushed off from April 4th. We will, we're not planning on having a public hearing for anything except the LCD changes. Is the only thing we've scheduled.
On the 20th.
On the 28th or or any date yet scheduled until we know what the other dates are.
Okay. All right. Sandy.
Great, thanks. Sandy Rogers, 82 Old Essex Road. If there's a concern of getting people to attend a second meeting that's going to go over a lot of the zoning. It may be good to put the LCD in with it unless there's some. Real timing constraint to that. As well as if there could be any. Interdependencies of zoning. Changes, building changes. That. People will want to look at in context of LCD areas versus non LCD areas. Versus splitting it up. It might be very difficult because we could be agreeing or not agreeing to something in the LCD. And then hearing about some other changes in zoning that may. Impact how a vote would go regarding the LCD, if you know what I mean. So just considering those two things. Thanks. Hello?
Yeah, okay.
Was I on?
No, you were on.
I just did, did what I say make sense regarding the interdependencies?
I can't directly comment on that. Sarah, would you like to take that?
We worked pretty hard to keep most of the issues so they're standalone. We have a meeting tomorrow night at. 6:30 and we will be back here on. The 22nd to give you all a summary of the changes we're discussing. So I don't think it's a big concern.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I know you said we were just going to consider this and not make any decisions today, but I think. Given the situation that the planning board finds themselves in terms of timing their hearings. Perhaps we might consider a motion. Saying only that. We will not have our annual town meeting on April and that we will schedule it at. A meeting. To be named later.
I think that that's. I think that that's reasonable to do that within the guidelines that we're trying to focus on concept here. Of splitting the meeting up.
We don't, voting not to have it on the 4th doesn't mean that we've agreed to split it up. It just means we have agreed that we will move it. Forward. And we can decide on splitting and how to split it later.
So, yeah, so what I'm hearing is that. The earliest that you would have the annual town meeting would be that end of April, Monday, that April, I think it's the 25th.
Or that we're just not going to have it on the 4th. Are you?
Right, right. Like I said, the earliest I think is what I'm hearing would be an April date. It could be could be later than that. You haven't made that decision, but.
I I don't. I don't want to put a specific date on this motion. And I'm concerned that if we say we're not having town meeting on April 4th. That. People are going to say, okay, board of selectmen, when are we having time? And.
And did you see Sarah's comment? Regarding school vacation? Thank you, Sarah.
School vacation week could be the 18th.
Right, yes.
So we just couldn't. Or shouldn't go to that one.
So not before the 25th?
Well, could we say not before the 24th and then?
24th is Sunday.
Correct.
But not before that, so the earliest would be the 25th.
Right.
Greg, did you have had made some sort of a comment with regard to constraints, the school budget in Essex that kind of constrained us? You can't push it out too far.
The issue is that Essex has their town meeting on May 2nd. And the district, school district has asked us. If we. Are going to move our town meeting. That we have it before. The Essex School. Essex votes on their school budget. They would like to have Manchester's school budget in the can. When they go to the other town meeting. And say, this is what Manchester did. So whether Manchester votes for or Manchester votes against, they can go and say, this is what Manchester did at their town meeting.
I move that we agree to postpone the annual town meeting. To occur not before the 25th of April.
I would second that.
Okay, any discussion by the board?
I'm going to ask. It's a question, it's 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 a Monday. It's always a Monday, or is it always a Monday?
No, we've we've. Done it on, considered it on Saturdays and done it on Saturday.
Yeah, we did. That's correct. We did consider it. So I. I'm I'm. Not necessarily locked into the 25th, but I would be locked into a later date in that month. Maybe not before the 25th, but.
But the motion is. Not before the 25th. So we have to go with that motion and vote it up or down if we're going to change it. Or propose an amendment and see whether the person who put the motion up wants to accept the amendment.
That's that's within the comment I just made.
So are you proposing an amendment to Anne?
No, that's okay. Not before the 25th means the 26, 27, 20, all of those days are.
It means the twenty fifth as well.
Yes.
Okay, now. I want to ask a town moderator who knows all things town meeting. Or at least better than anybody else in this town. If that puts any constraints on us if we vote on that motion. Other than not having town meeting before the twenty fifth.
Well, I don't think it puts any constraints on you at all because you could, you could at a later date change your mind and vote to hold it on the twenty third.
As long as it was two weeks in advance.
Well, as long as you met the statutory requirements for posting the warrant, yes.
And statutory requirements are two weeks in advance. Yes?
Greg? See, I don't know all things town meeting. Yeah, yes, I believe so. I have to, I always have to refresh my memory, but yes.
There are, there are constraints in terms of printers. That we have to deal with and we don't want to, I'm, I'm looking at Sarah's face going. I can't get Gary's face because he's going to picture up. To make the planning board too crazy about this. Okay, so we have a motion and we need to, and it's been seconded. Are we ready to vote? This would be not to hold town meeting before April twenty fifth. Okay, so let's do a roll call vote. Mr. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Round?
Yes.
Ms. Jakes?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Bobbin Turner votes yes. So we've postponed town meeting until at the earliest April twenty fifth. We have some town council reviews that we need to do for the planning board. Planning boards, my understanding from what Sarah Creighton just said, this planning board would like to go forward with a public meeting on the LCD changes on the twenty eighth of February? About the twenty, the twenty eighth?
Twenty eighth, yes.
Okay, because you're, you're the alternate Mondays to board select.
Yes.
Okay. And you would like town council's opinion before that?
Yes.
On the LCD at least. And the chair of the ZBA is asking for town council guidelines for after reviewing the proposed changes of what applicants to the ZBA could go forward and what cannot go forward. And of course, having said that, the chair of the ZBA raises her hand. So Sarah Melish. Sarah? You need to unmute yourself.
Sorry, I'm talking away. Sarah, Sarah Creighton indicated that their public hearing notes would only reference the LCD. So I think the issue before town council may be does that impact the review of the SOV application? Or are the changes to the east side of the LCD, so it doesn't impact it?
Okay.
Okay.
Got it. We will get that information for you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Hey Greg, is there anything else that you want to say about budget development updates? Or was that to comments about the school budget?
Well, there are a number of, there are a number of pretty important decisions that need to be made on the budget. The finance committee is working its way through those. I'll just quickly highlight them. We don't, I just want you to be thinking about them at a minimum. Because we just bought a little bit of time, so we, we we, we have a few more weeks to finalize this. So first up, concerning the police budget, Chief Fitzgerald came in to talk about the impact of the new police reform law and the likely impact that will have on our reserve officers. The short version is that all, all officers reserved or otherwise must be fully police academy trained. Therefore, there won't be much incentive for someone to be a reserve. They, if they have to be fully trained, they might as well get a full-time job. So we expect that to be impacting us in terms of the loss of our reserves and to anticipate that ZBA, the Finance Committee was inclined to agree with the chief's request to add an officer to, to the department. So that's one. Police reform will also likely, well, we don't know yet, but it's likely may have a very strong impact on harbor operations as well. Whereas now harbor masters and their staff are able to enforce the boating laws. It may turn out that only fully trained, fully police academy trained officers are able to make those stops on the water. So we're still waiting on the final ruling on that, but that is what they have proposed. And while we will probably be able to sort of limp along this coming summer with, with part, with, with officers on the water, you know, Saturday and Sunday. Longer term, we may have to revamp basically the operations of the harbor department in terms of its staffing alignment. So again, something, something to be aware of and we will continue to monitor what the state is, is issuing for final rulings on this in the next month or so. This, this coming week, we will have, the finance committee will focus on fire department and the desires of that department having additional firefighters. As you know, we've had many years of discussions regarding the loss of the call force and, and the need to have, the potential need to have four firefighters on duty rather than three on a shift, and the four on a shift to enable the ability to either respond to simultaneous ambulance calls, so running two ambulances requires two people on each ambulance, or if there is an active fire to be able to respond to that fire immediately and have the recommended two in, two out staffing, that is if two firefighters are going into a burning building, you want to have two firefighters on the outside supporting them and being able to provide immediate help if, if they run into, into severe difficulties. So that'll be up for discussion this coming, this coming week. And then the following week, we will have the Board of Health into the Finance Committee to talk about their request for reorganizing the department and moving forward with a full-time health agent rather than contracting a lot of those duties out and having a part-time office manager clerk. So those are some staffing and budgetary impact issues that are becoming front and center. Again, we'll need to be aware of that and be thinking about how we want to respond. And the Finance Committee will be, as I say, continuing its, its discussion going forward. Then finally, on the capital front, I'll wrap up with this, some, some fine tuning of the capital is as typical. The, the bigger issue and bigger debate is surrounding how best to fund athletic fields in particular. The new field at the, at the old burn dump, the renovation of Sweeney and something that has moved up on the priority list is dealing with rotunda. The rotunda, just in these last few storms, has, has been underwater. And it just accentuates the need to make sure that that, that structure is renovated. The pilings are on their last days. We had a study two years ago that gave them a two to five year life. So we do need to be moving on that. And if we replace the pilings, then the structure will require to be raised by Army Corps requirements in order to be more resilient to higher seas and bigger storms. And the cost of that renovation is likely to be significant, millions of dollars. And so how do we want to pay for that, potentially combining it with bond for Sweeney? You could bond for both of those. And instead of a debt exclusion, which raises taxpayers' tax bill, be about a one and a half, one and three quarter percent increase. Alternatively, you could decide to bond using community preservation surcharge instead of doing a one and a half percent surcharge, which we currently have, you can move it to the three percent, which is the maximum for the CPC surcharge. And the advantage here, you know, out of pocket is the same for the taxpayer, but the advantage is that we would be eligible for a premium match from the state. So not only do they increase their match based on the total dollars we raise, but they also have a second round of matching for those communities that have chosen to go to the three percent surcharge. So these are decisions you need to make tonight. And the surcharge issue is not one that we need to make this year. But it's something I just want you to be thinking about as we look at the long range needs of the town and these two projects in particular that could be bundled and be tied to could be a temporary increase to the, to the CPC surcharge while those bonds are in effect. Typically, you would bond for fifteen years, could do twenty, depending on how quickly you want to pay off the bond. So there's a lot there to digest and I, I just want to get them out on the table. It's something that the Finance Committee is, is working hard, working through those, these issues. And I just want to make sure you're up to speed as well.
Okay, we have two board hands up, so I'm going to take those. Anne?
Through you, Jeff, to Greg. I want to be sure that I understand. On the police force, they ask is for one additional person? Yes, or is it for a person twenty-four hours a day? It's just one effectively eight hour a day person?
Correct, correct. One, one additional, one additional full-time officer.
And the fire department ask is how, how many people?
So the, it'd be three or four additional firefighters. So if you went for three, that would be sufficient to have four four career firefighters on each shift. So right now we have a twelve plus one floater. The floater backfills people who are on leave. If you went to three more people, that would, that would eliminate the floater position so that there would still be times when there was only three people on duty unless you backfilled with overtime. If you went to four, that would allow you to still have the floater who could as, as the name implies, floats filling in for leave time.
Thank you very much. I just, I wanted to make sure that it was clear that one position and one person aren't always the same.
Yes, correct. I understand the question. It was a good one.
I'm sorry. Anne going the wrong direction.
My questions are actually, or our, our comments about the rotunda. So first of all, I, I don't think, I don't think we need to make a decision tonight, obviously, but I do think that we should be debating this year whether or not the surcharge should be increased this year so that we can start banking against those costs because those costs are large. And a little bit of an extra lead time would help us, especially if, if they're more imminent now because of the the more recent storms and the trends that we've been seeing. Second, the changes that will be needed to the rotunda if we are in fact going to put new pilings in there, the changes that will be required by the Army Corps. I think that those are going to be a bit of an eye opener and I, I think it would probably behoove us to get some design work done for that in advance. Rather than trying to, and, and publicizing the outcome rather than trying to shoehorn that into one year process.
Yeah, so the, so the proposal would be to have dollars approved at this coming town meeting and get that design work underway and have schematics of what that raised rotunda looks like by next, by, by the fall.
Becky?
Thank you, Jeff. My questions are, the first one, if we if we put forward, I guess it goes to town vote, right? The increase on the surcharge?
It's, it's a two-step vote. It's, it's by the town meeting and by ballot.
Okay, right. So thank you. And if you, if you do increase that, is there any time constraints in terms of if we do increase it, say it has to stay in place for so many years? Or can we modify that? Or can the town people modify that as the need goes up or, or goes down rather after the three percent?
So you can.
Temporary.
You can make it temporary, though you can never eliminate it to the point where it was no longer paying for the bond. So it has to be in place sufficient to pay for the bond that, that
Right.
that you bonded through. So if you wanted to eliminate the CP surcharge, say in five years, but you have a bond that's going for fifteen, you would have to have at least enough of a surcharge to pay for the bond until it was completely retired.
Okay, thank you. And my other question was about if, if there is concern regarding having to have a police officer, a full-time police officer on the water. Are the, is that, how soon might we know about that?
We may, we may hear within a month, maybe, maybe two months, but it's, it's actively being debated now.
Okay, just because that's something obviously we'd have to put in the budget as well. So, all right. Thank you, Greg.
John?
Thank, thank you, Jeff. Yeah, a question, Greg. The Army Corps is going to do some, some, some work on the pilings with regard to the dock at Tuck's Point. As part of that discussion or that planning that they had As part of that discussion or that planning that they had done for that, which was, I don't know, a year or two years ago. Is is that going to be compatible with any changes we make with the rotunda?
Yeah, so that that was anticipated by the design of those new floats.
Yeah, we're just changing the calendar here a little bit or thinking that we may.
Right, and and what we our thought is to we'll do a updated analysis of the rotunda. You know, in March, prior to the float work being done in April. And if there are some temporary shoreings, you know, some Band-Aids that we can put on the rotunda to buy us a little more time. Then the contractor who who's on board to do the the new floats. Can do those do those repairs at the same time. At a cost-effective basis for us. We don't have to mobilize a different crew, etc.
Okay.
So that's 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 the current thinking.
That's not affecting the float schedule right now?
No, it is not.
Okay, which has been a problem for two years, as you know.
Yeah, I am, yes.
Yeah, you're well aware. Okay, and and a follow-up to Becky's comment. So if this if the. This this change in police requirements, police officer requirements. Also then applies to the harbor master or to folks that are on the water. Is that going to be obligatory in a given? Time period? Or is that something that you could still have? A harbor master on the water, but not necessarily with legal. Law enforcement capabilities?
No, you're right. You would still have harbor master presence on the water.
Yes.
Doing doing non-law enforcement.
Okay, all right, so.
Aiding boaters and.
Right.
Making sure the the moorings are in the right place and boats aren't swinging into each other, all of that.
Right. So the law isn't requiring that that they'll all of them, all of the people associated with the harbor master also must be certified police officers. Okay.
No, no, yeah, it's just it's just the law enforcement piece of it.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
I have two questions. One is. In light of our trying to. Put numbers to. The number of large fires, the number of ambulance calls. Et cetera. How often? Are the harbor masters? Is the harbor master required to do something that would be? If this change goes through, and it sounds like it will. Requires police powers. How often does that actually happen?
I mean, that's happening. Frequently every hour while he's out there primarily telling people to slow down and enforcing. No wake laws. That's. That's the most frequent. Enforcement action that the harbor master and his staff do currently. Is is just constantly. Reminding people of the no wake zones and, you know, he. Puts on the blue lights and goes after someone who's racing through a no wake zone. So. That that would be a change.
Okay.
He can still encourage people not to go fast. And obey those no wake laws, but he would not have enforcement ability if this goes through.
Okay. The second one. I'm going to take a risk on. Which is. I'm very aware. That Tux Point is an icon. In. The town of Manchester by the sea. Probably the icon of the town of Manchester by the sea. Has there ever been any consideration whatsoever? Of taking the rotunda and putting it on land? Taking it. Out from extending over the harbor. Where? The vagaries of. Climate change and storms. Put us at great risk of having to constantly repair it at large amounts of money. And picking up this beautiful icon and bringing it up onto the land. Obviously, you'd have to have the shoreline behind the icon between that and the water well reinforced. And changing the configuration of the Tux Point Park. Now, that's blasphemy. But I'm willing to be blasphemous. When we consider that. The estimated costs that we're talking about. For this one item are. In the upper end of four million dollars. At least that's my my. Understanding of those numbers. And. Reestablishing the building on land may not cost that much, given that you don't have to get into pilings that are going to withstand. Major. Climate change storms. So. I'm going to throw that out there and. If anybody wants to comment on my blasphemy or have me burned at a stake, please go ahead. Yeah.
Historically, and I'll be as brief as I can, the rotunda was further out. And it was built because the yacht club blocked the view of the from the charter house to the harbor. And the rotunda was the answer. And that's the way the people in town could see the ocean. And yes, it's a hundred years ago, but that's the history.
Now the ocean is coming right over the rotunda, so we don't have any problems seeing it, but. Just. I understand. Thank you for that historical information. Becky.
Well, that was I was going to make that point as well. However, I think that's, you know. Good for you for thinking out of the box on that because it it. It's likely to just keep happening. I think that's an interesting concept and merits. Further. Discussion.
Be careful where you go with this, Becky. I'm willing to take the heat because it may mean me not only thinking out of the box, but thinking myself out of a seat on the Board of Selectment. If people get the idea that I want to change this icon around, but I do.
Maybe I can be the caboose on that train.
Well. Just I just want it to be something that we might be able to discuss.
Right.
Without throwing. Horrific barbs at each other.
No, I think it's a good idea and the fact that that that, you know, we do need to start thinking about. Things just like that because. How many Band-Aids do we put on something? Before. I mean, at some point, we will likely have to retreat a little bit. And. That might be a good start.
I I just, I'm, you know, I'm concerned on the other end of things with these storms. Taking away the riffraff wall and starting to encroach upon the singing beach club. I mean, we've got we've got serious climate change issues that we need to face in the long term. And those are just some of my thoughts. So I will I will entertain something from Mr. Gilbert and Mr. Coombe and and then we need to move on in our agenda. Go ahead, Gary.
Jeffrey, I am so glad you said that. That's a breath of fresh air. I don't know if you're right. I don't know if people will agree with you. But it's so great that you put that on the table that we should really rethink the town on some levels. Some of the roadways, instead of repairing them all the time, maybe we have to raise them six feet higher than they are. These are some big picture issues and and we spend too much on repairs. When in the end, we may have to do those those big movements with big expenses. So I'm so glad you said that.
When I think about big movements, Gary, I also think about the big movement. Of possibly having to relocate or redo the water treatment plant. Because of these climate change issues, so.
Absolutely.
I think we've got to keep climate change in the forefront of. Significant expenditures like the Tux Point rotunda. Mr. Coombe.
Yeah, hi, I'm Chris Coombe. I'm actually on the Harvard Advisory Committee. I'm not here for that, but uh. But yeah, I totally agree with you that moving positively moving it back would make sense. I've lived across the harbor my whole life and I mean, the tides are not going away. They're just getting bigger. So, yeah.
I I worry about your property. I know your property.
Oh, are you kidding? It's, yeah, it's terrible. The last couple of storms have been devastating.
Yeah, I mean, we may have to be sending, you know, life rafts out to you.
Absolutely. I mean, we already have a couple, so we'll be all right with that.
But Chris, the town will not pay.
No, no, we don't.
I'm just kidding. Okay, so I I just want to put that out for discussion because I think we need to consider it. I know it messes up the prom pictures and all this other stuff, but we really need to consider. The decisions that we make in the light of climate change. And that's not because the sky is falling, but because the ocean's getting worse. And we live next to the ocean. Okay, so thank you, Greg, for that update. I want to emphasize in your update something that hasn't been emphasized previously. In our discussions about. Increases to the fire department employees, and that is. That the simultaneous ambulance calls run forty to seventy times a year. So we may not have a lot of large fires, but forty to seventy times a year is three times a month. To six times a month. That we have simultaneous ambulance calls and we do have backup services, but we know that they're hurting trying to keep their own personnel in place. Okay, moving on at seven forty PM. Oh, no, it's eight thirteen. We have the compost facility for the review and approval of the contract for the compost facility. Greg, go ahead.
So a long time in the making. I think we are ready for your for your approval. This is a twenty-year agreement. With an option for another ten-year extension. This is for Black Earth to construct and operate. The new compost facility at the existing transfer station. The transfer station would continue to operate though a slightly different. Slightly moved and realigned at the at the current transfer station area. And so this calls for Black Earth to construct at their expense. The the new facility. To to compost our food waste and our yard waste. And all things organic, all things that will decompose. And. It provides for us to continue to pay Black Earth for their curbside pickup of our compost. Though at a reduced rate from what we are currently paying. And indeed, if we were to. Find that the operations are going so smoothly in a few years down the road, we could propose to the voters. A ninety-nine-year lease agreement. And in so doing, we would be able to eliminate our our pickup cost because Black Earth. Would find the value of having that very long-term arrangement and able to extend to us then. Zero cost to our curbside collection. So this this contract, the twenty-seven, thirty-seven, thirty-one pages, something like that. Captures all of the detail, twenty-seven pages captures the details. It provides for. The process if things don't go well, which we do not anticipate, but we always want to have that spelled out. Ahead of time so that we have a roadmap for resolving any disputes, again, not anticipating those, but it's good to have those spelled out before we get underway. And the actual construction of the project is being handled, as I say, by Black Earth, but with their engineers. And we have the ability to review and and give final sign-off on any modifications. To the original designs. There are a few, but we are comfortable now. With Black Earth's design efforts and our engineer will be reviewing and approving. What modifications may be proposed. They're still working through that. Black Earth is, there's a few more to go. It'll depend a little bit on final state approval of the of the. Basically, the operating permit for for the new facility. So this obviously moves the the existing compost operations to this new location once it is constructed. Hopefully by sometime late next next fall or winter. And we can move forward. With what we hope to be a long-term. A long-term deal, a good deal for both us and for and for Black Earths.
Becky.
I I have a few questions. I'm not sure whether these are for you, Greg, or whomever, but. I didn't notice anywhere and probably was, and I just. Didn't understand the legalese, but I didn't see anywhere where it really talked about. Any potential transfer of ownership. It did towards the latter part of the contract go from talking about contractor to contractors. But there was no specific mention of. How it would be transferred. Is that something that's? If if, I mean. Andrew, I'm guessing you're not going to be doing that in ninety-nine years. I could be wrong, but.
Right, so this anticipates a twenty-year deal with a ten-year renewal. And if indeed, you know, Black Earth. Decides to hang it up before then. Then there's they they either need to restore the site to its original or or. Or leave the equipment and the facilities in place. So so if indeed, if Black Earth decides this isn't what they had hoped it was going to be, and they. Or they move on to bigger and better things or whatever. We still own the land and we would have either the land restored or we would take take over the the facilities that are there.
So in other words, if at some point in time. If Andrew is no longer Black Earth and somebody else is Black Earth, that doesn't matter because Black Earth is Black Earth.
Well, that's true, yes.
So you're saying if the series gets canceled, Black Earth, the next generation, how does that work?
Exactly. Okay, that was one question. The other question was on page thirteen of the contract. Where it talks about station times. Is there any? I didn't see where if for some reason the day days and times change. I mean, it gives very specific days and times. And and that might change, but I don't see where there's any room for that to be modified.
Well, just so in general, you know, there can be amendments to the contract, but those have to be agreed to and written by both by both parties.
Okay, so right now that that is in there because that's an agreement between Black Earth and the town for those specific hours.
Right, and that's our current operation.
Okay, yeah, yep, all right. And then I had, I'm just trying to get to the next page. For last sentence. It was some, well, never mind. Not seeing where I was. Seventeen one. Sorry. I think my other question was answered by something you said, Greg. Thank you. Thank you, Andrew.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
So I should have said that at the beginning, this has been fully vetted by my counsel. And has. Sample approval from from both parties, town council as well as Black Earth Council.
I shouldn't have done that. I'm not. No lawyer, not even close.
Yeah, me either. It's real complicated how they speak. You have to like force them to speak in English.
Okay. Okay.
A total net on, in um, section fourteen, fourteen one termination. Section A on the third line, it's the wrong kind of it's.
There's a few of those.
Tried to catch him, but. Oh, I see that. It's Lender. Is that where you are?
Yep.
Yep, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Are we prepared to move forward on this contract?
Move, I move to approve the contract between the town and Black Earth for the construction. Of the described facility.
And I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Jakes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Round?
Yes.
And the chair gratefully endorses and says yes. I'm really excited that we've gone through this process and that we've worked it through. I know it was tenuous at some points. And uh, that everything was worked out. And that uh, Black Earth will be uh, exciting here in Manchester by the sea. Um, it's been something we've been looking forward to for a long time and uh. It's very exciting. So. Go get a shovel, Andrew.
Thank you to everybody who has worked through this. It's a great outcome.
Yes, thank you to Greg and town council and Chuck Dam and.
Nate.
Yeah.
And uh.
Andrew.
Andrew and his entire team. Um, it's, it's great that you guys were able to work this all the way through. So, thank you.
Thank you all. We're, we're looking forward to it. It's really. State of the art building and just looking for it to be a model for other towns to follow. You know, to get closer and closer to Boston, uh, where there's less and less land, so. You know, it's a problem. We need to face a society, but no one left space for it. So we're at the landfill.
Okay, and thank you for uh, for all that you do to. Reduce our solid waste in this town. Every week I look at the, the guys come through and take my can and I really appreciate it.
Yeah.
All right, so we're gonna move on. I, I'm, I'm sorry that we can't have a parade and. Um, a party and a celebration, but uh, we gotta move on. We got more work to do here tonight. So thank you, Andrew.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, we're um, we're, we're sliding towards twenty four minutes behind. Um, we have a complete streets policy and sidewalk extensions. What I. Well, Sarah wants to, yes.
Can I propose that you swap five and six?
Thank you. I, that's, that's, that's where I was headed. Um, I was weighing that against Sarah being able to go to bed early. Um, but uh, we will uh. We will uh, I would, I would like to do that. So is there any objection from the board to move cell signaling up? Since they would do it eight, ten and um. And. Move uh, complete streets and sidewalk extension discussion after them. No objection being heard. And uh. We have some people from uh, cell signaling here.
We do. My name is uh, Peter Gordo and I am a resident of Hamilton and I am representing uh, cell signaling as a development manager. Um, I'm joined this evening by Craig Thompson, who is CST Senior Vice President of Global Operations. And Christopher Combe, uh, who is a business development analyst and a member of the Combe family. Um, I want to thank the board for uh, giving us some time. Uh, this evening, our goal is to give you a brief overview of self signaling and its vision for the Atwater Avenue site. And some of the challenges that we need to address in order to realize the opportunity. Um, I think, I, I know that uh, cell signaling is extremely excited about uh, the opportunity that this parcel presents. And I think that uh, the town of Manchester um, should be excited about a, a potential partnership with a, with a wonderful corporate citizen. Uh, so. Did you all receive the uh, handout that I sent to Greg earlier today?
Uh, the second handout, yes. Did everybody on the board see that?
We do. You're welcome to put it up on the screen, Peter.
I will, I will put it up on the screen. Tell me if you see that.
It's coming.
Got it?
We can see that you've started screen sharing, but you better choose the uh, the presentation screen.
Uh, I did. I'm gonna stop sharing and try again. Think that uh, something may have frozen on my end.
Okay.
Hey, Peter, do you want me to try?
Craig, if you wouldn't mind?
I can give a shot here. Let's see. Wait, it's open now.
There you go.
I think you had it, Peter.
All right, let me, why don't I try again? It may just take a second.
Okay, so be more patient.
Here we go.
Yeah, it looks good.
Good, okay. I will quickly swap. Swap slides. This first page is really intended to cover um, most of the relevant facts of, about what we're trying to do. The, it's, you know, sort of the, the who, what, where. But in terms of a little background on self signaling, it's a five hundred person strong life science firm headquartered in Beverly. Um, it was founded in nineteen ninety nine by Michael Combe, who's a Manchester resident. To develop and manufacture research products to enhance biological investigation. And I uh, will avoid trying to talk about the science. Craig is gonna jump in in a little bit and, and can offer a little bit more. Uh, substance on the science. Uh, but we have spent the last, the better part of the last two years looking for a site where self signaling can. Uh, develop a campus uh, where they can be for the long term. Uh, there was a very, it was a long list of criteria that we were looking for. I think we found it in our backyard, but to, to assemble zoning, access to open space, uh, the right parcel size, access to sewer. And a place where we can sustainably develop a campus, uh, were all components of the, of the, of the decision making process. We looked from ninety three to ninety five to four ninety five and um, landed in our backyard. So we currently uh, have placed the forty acre parcel at the end of Atwater Avenue uh, under agreement. Um, we're underway with a due diligence process. Um, we need to make sure that the development of the company's program is actually feasible on this site. As you know, the site is largely disturbed. It's been used for many years as a stone and gravel quarry. Uh, today it's being, I don't believe anything is currently being quarried out of there, but it's being used primarily as a storage. And processing facility for gravel, loam and uh, other, you know, site work um, products. In the near term, cell signaling's objective is to develop um, approximately a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand square feet of research and development space. Uh, over that time, over time, they expect they will need to grow. We believe the Atwater Avenue site is well suited to meet their long term needs. There are some challenges to the site. Um, among the biggest is the fact that currently while we are, while that site is in the limited commercial district. Uh, the R and D use is not allowed um, anywhere except west of Pine Street. And so we have come to the planning board and they have graciously worked uh, very quickly with us. To try and modify the zoning, to allow the research and development use elsewhere in the LCD. Um, currently, the, the proposal would be to allow uh, this use. East of School Street. Uh, if we're successful in this effort, uh, we see a number of benefits to the town of Manchester, ranging from the restoration of a blighted site. To a significant new source of tax revenue and as I mentioned, the introduction of a, a really good corporate citizen uh, into the community. This is the site. Um, I know you don't have a lot of context there, but that would be one twenty eight um, to the south. Uh, you have trustees of reservations, ownership to the north and to the uh, to the northeast and to the north. Uh, the Brady uh, storage facility and the Mac to the, to the south. And with that, I'm gonna pass it over to Craig uh, to talk through a couple of, a couple of slides more about self signaling.
Sure. Thank, thank you, Peter, and um, thank you all for allowing us to here to present. Talk a little bit about what we have in mind for this site as well as the time, uh, update you, educate you on CST and answer any questions that you may have. Um, you know, as Peter mentioned, CST has actually been in business now for well over twenty years and uh, with a fairly simple mission. And that's to enable personalized medicine. And we do this. By providing research scientists all around the globe uh, with the highest quality products that uh, we both manufacture. Uh, develop and manufacture, you know, at CST and that helps enable uh, these scientists to um, better understand biological processes. That lead to uh, better therapies for a variety of diseases. And the Combe family uh, as well as the rest of CST believes that it's critical for us to conduct our business. Uh, in ways that are consistent with both social and environmental responsibility. Um, I've actually been at the company now for over seventeen years. And as a scientist by training, uh, and now somebody who leads operations there, one of the reasons that I've been there for seventeen years and that I remain there. Is in fact, the commitment the Combe family has, uh, not only to the um, you know, improvement of our biological understanding. Of disease and trying to improve therapies for people, but it's their commitment to um, uh, the, you know, the local environment and the global environment as well. It makes it a really meaningful and impactful company, you know, to be a part of and something that I am personally actually quite proud of. Um, go to the next slide, please, Peter. So the um, products that we develop uh, and, and then sell enable scientists to. Better understand some of the most common diseases that afflict humans and that includes uh, such diseases as cancer, diabetes, Alzheimer's. Uh, and it's through a better understanding of these diseases that leads to better medicines. And, and I think all of us have, have, you know, probably family members, close friends who've suffered from one or, or more of these and can appreciate. The needs that, that arise there across the globe. Uh, next slide, please. And while we've had a longstanding uh, presence here on the North Shore and a footprint here, we are in fact actually a global company. The headquarters for CST is, is in the area. It includes all of our research development as well as manufacturing. Uh, but we also now have uh, locations globally in Europe, uh, Japan, China. That includes warehouses and offices that help support our, our customers around the globe. Uh, and in fact, we serve scientists all over the globe, more than well over half of our sales now are, are outside of the US. And I think it's safe to say that every single top life science, um. You know, institute in the world, whether that be academic uh, or pharmaceutical companies buys our products. Um, and uh, they use these to uh, guide their research. Uh, next slide, please. But while we are a global company, uh, we're also very thoughtful, uh, considerate and focused on the um, our, our local, you know, responsibilities as well. I mean, and that's something that comes straight from the Combe family. Uh, we believe very strongly in supporting local communities uh, through environmental as well as a wide range of uh, community outreach programs. Uh, so we, as much as we, our, our, our products are used globally and we think globally in terms of being a. Um, I would say a good partner and part of the, you know, risk being a responsible citizen to the globe, we very much have a local focus as well. Uh, and it's something that we, you know, have absolutely every, uh, you know, commitment to continuing, uh, you know, as we remain. If um, a really important part of the North Shore um, community. Uh, next slide, please. So in order to continue to both, you know, serve our mission uh, as well as our customers desires for, for more products. You know, we, we, we need to expand uh, and that expansion is primarily devoted to um, research and development space. As Peter mentioned, we're, you know, we haven't sort of settled on an exact square footage, but we're looking at approximately a hundred and twenty five thousand. Um, additional square feet that's needed to support um, our mission. Uh, and uh, you know, there's more, more details that will be, you know, uh, figured out here in, you know, in the near future. Um, I do realize that one of the questions that's come about, you know, from some of the discussions that we've been having with members of the local community is questions about. Uh, what type of um, you know, um, what we, what kind of work we do, what risks that may pose. Uh, I want to make clear here that CST does not work uh, with any sort of um, infectious. Um, disease pathogens that would pose any risk to the community. Uh, we do have a, you do operate at a bio safety level two. This is an extremely common level of bio safety that virtually all of our customers, whether it's an academia or industry work in. And it simply allows us to work with human cells and tissues that are necessary for us to develop our products and evaluate them and um, support our customers with. Um, and you know, one sort of final, you know, I think comment, and this is something that again, you know, is very much comes from the Combe family itself. And we're very fortunate, you know, Chris Combe is here today. He's already been, you know, commented on one of the items that was a, a further discussion. Um, you know, reducing our environmental footprint is a core value to CST and we are absolutely committed. Um, to maintaining that as we consider expansion. Um, and you know, we want to minimize that impact on the natural world and maximize our potential for. Both, you know, positive contributions for the local community, you know, as well as ecosystems and that, and that is something we're committed to as we go about. Trying to determine the um, you know, specifics of our, of our expansion and the, the site that it's on. You know, and I think one thing Peter mentioned, um, there's a significant opportunity, I believe, for CST to come into this piece of property. And actually make significant improvements there. And, and it's something that we very much look forward to working with the town of Manchester. To see that vision both for the town of Manchester, you know, move forward, but also for CST. And what we hope to be our, our, you know, our new home and, and something that we see as something that's a, a long term investment for us. Uh, in, in a company and a long term investment for the, you know, community of Manchester as well. Uh, I think, uh, next slide, please. I think that's it for what I have, Peter.
Thank you, Greg. I appreciate it. Uh, this slide really is just a list. It's a short list of some of the things that we're trying to work through. Um, and just to tick them off quickly, the zoning changes, I presume most of you are familiar with that. Um, I do have, the next slide is actually the, 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 the biolab changes in some detail or just, you know, a summary of those. Um, and essentially it would allow, uh, as I mentioned, it would allow laboratories. Um, and the R and D use to be extended to the land east of School Street. Uh, it would allow buildings within the LCD uh, to uh, go from instead of thirty five feet currently to fifty five feet. That is to, the reason for that is because uh. Lab, the typical lab floor to floor today is 16 feet. So in 35 feet where you perhaps used to get three floors, we can only get two. We would like to be able to get to three floors in order to minimize the footprint of these buildings. And so that takes you to that, you know, 50 to 55 foot level. We've asked that the setbacks, that the planning board have the flexibility to adjust the setbacks. And this, so there's, they, the, the bylaw change would, would offer them that based on the merits of the project. There is a fairly arbitrary minimum lot width of 500 feet, which would be deleted. It's probably a, a good thing, given the irregularity of many of the lots in the LCD. And then the lot coverage ratio would be, it's, it's not a particularly clear. Portion of the bylaw today, but the, the maximum lot coverage would be set at 40%. For buildings and accessory structures and a total of 60% from pervious surfaces, which would be, we did a study of other. Commercial districts and other neighboring communities and that's still on the conservative side of, of those ratios. I think it's important to note that our agreement with the property owner is contingent on getting these zoning changes. Passed at the Springtown meeting, whenever that, whenever that Springtown meeting is to occur. I know that's something that's in some flux today. Other, other items on this list, suitable water and sewer capacity. We've had a couple of good conversations with Greg and Chuck Dam. We understand it's a complex issue for the town in many ways, but it's also one, we're getting some clarity going forward about our. About our ability to access that when the time is right. That'll be a crucial component for us. And so we'll continue to talk to Chuck and Greg about that. Suitable electric and gas for obvious reasons. We're talking to National Grid on both of those fronts. We're working through numerous other due diligence items, ensuring that the site is clean, that they're, that the soils are suitable for construction. All of those normal due diligence items. We are beginning to think about some site planning. We want to make sure that the, that the site will accommodate the long-term. Needs of self signaling. We will be looking closely at traffic. I know the traffic on School Street is a big issue. We think that this site is well located from a traffic perspective because most employees will arrive via 128. They would probably take a left on school and a right on Atwater. They probably wouldn't be going to town. Particularly at a busy time of day in the morning when you have school. I know that there's issues at school and Pleasant. But that's obviously traffic is, is a major aspect of this that we'll be studying. And I know if this goes forward, you'll be studying it with us. The economic impact, I think, can't be overstated. This is a very high value facility. I think it would be, it'll, it'll contribute significantly to your tax rolls, should it come to fruition. I think it's in, in many ways, it, 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 it meets many of the goals set forth in your master plan. And so I think that, you know, the economic impact is, is an important one to keep in mind. Craig touched on it, but I want to touch on it again, sustainability and environmental impact. I, I think I've spent as much time in the past two or three weeks talking about sustainable construction as I have any other aspect of this project. It is, it is, if not, it's probably the single highest priority in considering this project about how we approach this sustainably. The, the company has extremely high goals for what it develops. I also think that there are.
Can I speak on that a little bit?
Sure.
Yeah, no, I just want, want to let you guys know. So, you know, I come from a family of scientists and that, they, my grandfather really. Taught me about, you know, conservation and, you know, the role that we need to play in the ecosystem, which is not to take everything, but, but to give back and. You know, that my dad now, you know, abides by that. And so I just wanted to say, you know. We will do our best to, you know, to build, you know, as green as possible.
One of the. One of the things I've said a lot in the last couple of weeks is that cell signaling seems to walk the walk, not just talk the talk on, on the environmental side. One of the consistent comments we've gotten from folks. Is that there is concern about water quality and storm water, the impact of storm water on water quality. And when I mentioned that to Chris and I mentioned a conversation I'd had with the Manchester Essex Conservation Trust. And there was some, they, they had mentioned a family of fish that live in the Sawmill Brook. I got a four paragraph email back from Chris. I think it was all typed on his phone, which is even more remarkable. But his knowledge of the Sawmill Brook, the environment or the, the species of fish that live there and the.
The Sea Run Brook.
What's that? The Sea Run Brook. So it's, it's this, this commitment to the environment, you know, long story short, this commitment to the environment is very real. And then just timeframe, obviously we've got a fairly short window of time to realize this important zoning change and to finish our due diligence. If that's successful, we would probably relatively quickly move to closing. And at that point, we would begin a design and permitting process that would probably last 18 to 24 months. And, you know, if, if, again, if everything went perfectly, you might be sticking a shovel in the ground sometime in 2024. That's the, you know, this is a long-term process. We have a lot of, we have a lot of permitting and a lot of planning ahead of us. But, you know, that's what it takes to get a project of this magnitude and importance done. That concludes our formal presentation. I know that Chris, Craig and I are all happy to take questions or answer any, you know, whatever you'd like to ask us. Go ahead, Becky.
Hi there. I would like to say that I, I also was on the planning board meeting, the most recent one that you all attended. And I think this is really an exciting and wonderful opportunity for the town. I'm looking at the, the site where you're planning on the, the 40 acres. Can, can any of you tell me where on, and this is out of curiosity, where on that, the. Land you're contemplating putting it, if you're, you know, you've got 40 acres and you're going to. Potentially build up to 40% of that, I think you said. 60. Where, yes, thank you. Where, where on the property would, are you thinking?
Unfortunately, I'm not sure I can really give you an answer. I think that we're presently, we're testing the site for its ability to absorb. You know, volumes of space, but that this, the, the parcel is, is a challenging one. You have a plateau where the, you have the old quarry plateau, which, which is at the 80 elevation. You have a cliff, you have the top of the hill, which is at the 120 elevation. And trying to figure out how to make all of that work and work together is going to be a challenge. We, right now, the, the, we're trying to make sure that the site will accommodate it. But I don't think we've come to any conclusions as to where we might actually build.
And I, I ask that simply because, you know, the, it's so nice and this was brought up at the planning board meeting, just having that. The, the green from the highway. And I know that where you're, where you all are located off 128 now, you do a really nice job of, of having it. Be very naturally appealing and even on the inside of the building. So I was just curious where it might be sited in terms of maintaining what green is between the highway and. Wherever you'll be.
That's certainly something will be, if this goes forward, we will be coming with lots of those plans to, you know, for consideration at the planning board.
I think it's safe to say we have no plans and, you know, taking away the green.
Yep.
Yeah. So it's going to be set, will, will we step back for sure?
I have no doubt. And again, I think it's really exciting opportunity all around. Thank you very much.
Mr. Bowlin.
A little earlier, you mentioned that you'd been, you had been listening to our conversations about the annual town meeting time. And you made a reference to the Springtown meeting need for. Changes to the zoning bylaws. And we had discussed timeframe changes of the end of April for our annual town meeting, potentially shifting some of the zoning bylaw changes out into the June timeframe. Do either of those dates present any challenges for you from the standpoint of your purchase and sales agreement or other contractual obligations?
That timeframe does not present an issue.
Thank you.
Mr. Round.
Yes, Peter, thanks for the, thanks, thanks for the presentation. I think it's a great opportunity for both of us. Not going to ask too many questions because you're still working on a lot of questions there and pushing a lot of things along here. Just in a, in a question of zoning though, and I, and that's, that's kind of the time, I think that's probably the one that's furthest along or is, is most time sensitive. Do you have animal colonies that you maintain there? And is that all, is that all included in laboratory establishments for scientific research? Or does that need special, special requirements?
I think we haven't, we haven't talked about that specifically, but I would have assumed that that would be included by. The, by the zoning definition of, of research and laboratory.
Yeah. And, and I can say, we do maintain a very small animal colony that includes mice and rabbits on site.
Expect that. Not, not primates or something, but certainly.
No.
Small animals. Yep.
No primates, small animals, very, you know, relatively small number of them.
Yep.
Would you be willing to collect some of the rabbits from the surrounding community?
I'm sure we'll, we'll be, we'll be taking those in as well.
Any other questions from the board?
I may be flying above my pay grade here, but. I had a question on. Some things that you referred to as needing to be changed by laws as opposed to. Variances within the LCD bylaws. Is there a need to actually change the bylaws themselves as opposed to get a variance for. The existing bylaw?
So. A, a variance would be one path to the, to the proposed development. However, and I'm, I am not an attorney, but the, the path to a variance can be. It's, we would, we would not have the confidence necessary to proceed with the site. If obtaining a variance was our path to putting this use on the site, if that makes sense. We, although we understand that a special permit, that the town has no obligation to allow this use, we feel confident enough. That we can put forth a very strong proposal that we're willing to be subject to the special permit provisions. But I think we view getting a variance to be a particularly, or to be greater risk than we would be willing to absorb. Does that make sense? Does that answer your question?
That does make sense, yes. And that's certainly not for the board of selectmen to decide. It's up to the planning board to decide. And the zoning board of appeals to decide. But that certainly makes sense. Thank you. I just wanted to clarify.
Well, thank you all very much for your time this evening. We look forward to continuing to work with you all and Greg with you as well. Thank you.
And Craig, I got those rabbits all lined up for you. Just come down to my yard.
I can't wait. I'll be there tomorrow. Thank you very much, everyone. Appreciate the time that you've allowed us to present. And again, we're, we're obviously open to. Whether, you know, questions and that you may have going forward.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night.
Okay. They're a lot more efficient than we are. Let's go back to number five, and this is an affirmation of the board of selectmen's position regarding. A sidewalk extension under the complete streets policy in Upper School Street. Extending that sidewalk out to. The area that we're just talking about, out to. At Water Ave, out to the area where. We had told SLV that we would be extending it previously. And the reason for this vote is. It has been, it is being proposed is to. To make clear our position since that position has been muddled somewhat in the 40B negotiations. That the town will be extending public sidewalks. Beyond, beyond 128 on School Street. To Atwater Ave. So Greg, is there anything you want to add to that?
I know it's consistent with your position last spring when we were negotiating. And I think it's, it's appropriate to affirm that indeed if development does take place along that stretch of School Street. You are fully committed to having a public sidewalk.
Okay, Anne?
Thank you. I think we should be careful not to limit it to Atwater Ave, but that we will extend it. So that it would be accessible, easily accessible from the driveway proposed by SLV. Which is somewhat further down the road.
Actually, I think they were a little bit closer to town in the latest iteration, but we could change.
Perhaps language like, we would extend it. To meet development on the stretch of road. To the east, to the north of 128.
And to the east or west of School Street.
Any. Talking about two sides of the sidewalk on two sides or?
No, I'm talking about extending it for development on either side of School Street, including the project that we were just discussing. Any other board questions about this? Okay, Sarah?
Just to be clear, it's my understanding the SLV driveway is 135 feet north of that water Ave. So it would need to go north of that water bath.
Again, I think, I think Ed's comment that you, you are extending the, the sidewalk to accommodate any development that will take, where to take place. On either side of School Street.
Okay. So can we get a clear motion on this, Becky?
I was just going to ask if you wanted a motion.
Yeah, if we can get a clear motion on this.
Well, now therein lies the difficulty.
Therein lies the, the rub, yeah.
Exactly. Okay. I would propose that we make a motion to firm the position of the Board of Selectmen regarding extending the sidewalk on Upper School Street across 128 on either side of School Street to meet any development. How's that? Anne, you're frowning.
Sorry, um, any development, you know, Utopia Farm?
That's not a development, is it?
If they put another shed on.
I am happy to any suggestions and amendments because it's not been seconded, so.
Accommodate, to accommodate any new development that might take place north of 128.
Let's, I don't think we want to say, okay, we, I want to be fairly careful not to say that we're going to put in sidewalk on both sides of the street.
That's right. She said either, which means it's one or the other.
I think the language could be simple.
Okay.
And to extend the sidewalk to the north side of 128, on, on the north side of 128, because it already exists, to accommodate any development.
On Upper School Street.
On Upper School Street.
Second.
Okay, Sarah?
I was just going to say that I, I'm assuming the sidewalk would be on the east side of School Street and extension, and it might be important because maybe the police chief will require action motivated pedestrian lights to cross School Street and across the ramps up from 128 on the east side.
I, I believe that in the, any design of a complete streets program, that the ability to cross the street from the sidewalk on the SLV side to the sidewalk on the east side of School Street would be included in the development of that proposal. That would include any crosswalks or traffic lights or anything else that was necessary. In other words, we will design a safe crossing for any development that does happen on Shingle Hill.
Um, Jeff, may I just, Claire, make sure Gail got whatever the motion, the final motion wording is.
I've got it. Would you like me to read it back to you?
No, ma'am.
I would.
Okay, all right. Our move to extend the sidewalk walk on the north side to the, on the north side of 128 to accommodate any development on Upper School Street.
I'd like to add to the language of this that we are affirming our previous position. This is the position that we stated in the Board of Selectmen negotiations with a developer of Shingle Hill.
Fixed up by just adding in line with our existing complete streets policy.
Okay, so that's the way the language would go, Hila?
Just put that on the front of the amendment.
Yeah, in line with our existing complete streets policy, the Board of Selectmen affirms
its previous stance.
The decision to
Extend the sidewalk.
North of 128 to accommodate any development.
New development. I accept the friendly amendments.
The sausage. Can we get a second on this?
Yeah, you had a second and I, I, I affirm the amendment or I'm okay with the amendment.
Okay.
A second.
So any further discussion from the board? Roll call vote. Mr. Bowler?
Yes.
Mr. Round?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Jakes?
Yes.
Mr. Biden, returner votes yes. Our final agenda item is BOS Policies Continued Review. And here we're going to, you're talking about Town Council's response to our request regarding recording retaining recordings of meetings. Greg, you want to describe this?
So Town Council did not have a strong opinion, one way or the other. She has found it sometimes advantageous to have recordings. It's been sometimes a struggle to mesh what was approved in minutes versus what was actually in the meeting. So that has caused some problems in some cases. But the bottom line is she thinks this is a policy decision that you can go either way. She is comfortable either with a policy that retains them for a certain amount of time. She's also comfortable with deleting them as soon as you approve the minutes. So it's, it's, it's really your preference. I, if, if you're going to retain them, I, I don't. My, my, my personal recommendation is not to retain them permanently. I think that, that is overly onerous in terms of backlog, there's the maintaining such a record. But having said that, if you feel it's, it's helpful to have them for, I think you were commenting up to three years last time. That's something that we can do.
If I may.
Go ahead, Anne.
Yeah. Okay, this, I think we should defer the discussion of this because we haven't heard from the other boards with quasi judicial authority. And I don't see any point um, in fine tuning something that may not work at all with the other boards. Second, to be perfectly frank, I did not, the idea of spending $4,000 to keep these things is just what I had in mind, what we had, what I described to Eli and, and, and Greg, was something much more along the line of taking a recording, putting it on an SD card, putting it in an envelope, putting it in a folder for that year or that month of the year. If somebody wants a copy, we sell them an SD card. We make a copy of the existing one. They go home with their SD card. I didn't anticipate going to permanent storage on rotating media on shared servers. That's just way beyond what I, I had imagined. And I would like to, I sent something around on the permanence of various media. And according to a professional organization that evaluates these things, SD cards are much more reliable than rotating media. The reason that there is raid with multiple copies is that rotating media are not in fact stable. And I don't, and SD cards are in fact one of the more stable media that we have today. We could, we could burn these things on to, on to CDs, except on to DVDs, but even writable DVDs are less stable than SD cards. And so there's the model that I had in mind as, as we set this up. And we have gone way off in a scary and expensive direction. And if we decide that, that this can only be done if we pay for expensive storage, then I suggest that we just, you know, eliminate the policy, we'll make the recordings. They go up on, on YouTube, they come down when they come down. And that's my pick point of view on this at this point.
Any other board members' comments?
If I may.
Go ahead, Becky.
Um, I, I, I just having read over what Michelle or Town Council recommended, I don't think that we need to do anything more than what Anne just said.
Jeff, if I may, question, yeah. And it sounds fairly simple and I assume you're talking a few hundred bucks to do what you want to do. Is that correct?
Less than that, probably.
Okay, but it's, it's really kind of an upfront investment on some of that and then some disposable stuff. But it's just, and, and, and you use the stuff and, and that's what it would cost per year, less than that. So if, if that's the case, yeah, when I, when that 4,000 showed up here in the notes, I, I was kind of floored. I agree that that's not something that makes any sense. But if it's just a couple of hundred bucks, that's fine. And, and I'm okay with just one year. I don't need three years. One year is fine with me. I'm pretty flexible on that. I think it should be retained for a little bit because minutes go out there and then somebody may have a question. And you, you need to refer, but I think a year is enough time.
If I may respond?
Sure.
My reason for not initially not putting a limit on it is that somebody has to pay attention to get rid of them. If you make them say that you have to get rid of them. If they sit in a folder, yeah, it's going to include increasingly clog Greg's closet, but I don't. The reason I, I did not suggest a termination date is who is going to remember every year to go through and throw out last two, three years ago's recordings?
Well, the policy could read that you retain a year. If it sits there longer than that, that's, it doesn't make any difference. The policy says that we'll have it for a year. And if you want something within the past year, we're sure to have it. And it gets disposed of every couple of years or something. It doesn't make too much difference. But the year would be the limit that anybody would ask for, be able to ask for, for information.
Jeff, clarify, thank you. I, I, what I, when I said I would, I agree with what Anne was saying. It was not the SD cards. It was the let it go up on YouTube for however long and then be done. And not actually keeping or maintaining physical copies. Thank you.
Sarah Melish?
Yes, so the ZBA had a policy of eliminating audio tapes when the minutes were done. And the clerk did not follow through with that. So we received an open meeting law violation when our, our audio was released through public records that our minutes did not conform. And we had to adjust our minutes. And I'm not 100% sure we want that challenge. If we don't retain them, if we eliminate the audio when we complete the minutes, then we don't have that challenge.
Anne?
If there's a situation where the minutes don't reflect what actually happened, then there is a problem and we deserve to be in trouble.
Hila?
I was going to say something similar to what Anne said. Also, I, I think people, there, people can be open meeting trolls on on just about any topic. Every once in a while you get a town that's besieged by, by it as well known to happen. I don't think that this policy necessarily guarantees that you're going to have that. And if you were going to have that, you were going to have that on some other basis anyway. Also, earlier when Anne clarified her position about a, a simple and cheap variation or presumption of storage, that was my thinking as well. I support her position on that.
So we, we have heard back from Planning Board and they're okay with this requirement. There were three other boards. Four other boards, FinCom, CBA, Historic District Commission.
Oncom.
Oncom, thank you, John.
Board of Health and not FinCom.
Not FinCom, yeah. Okay. What I would like to suggest is that in our policy of creating policy, that we go forward. that we go forward tonight and allow a two week period for these other four boards and I will send another email out to them to catch up with formal votes one way or the other in terms of their own input or any input they want to get. And then make a decision two weeks from tonight on a final reading. Is there any objection to that? I just don't want this to drag out into the end of March.
Well, I don't really care if it drags out into the end of March. I just don't think that we should talk about it every meeting between now and the end of March. So.
That's my definition of dragging out.
We'll talk about it one more time. So if it's not next meeting, but it is at the end of March, that's okay. But it's just, we should just address this one.
Right. But our, our process is the two consecutive meetings we do a reading and then a second reading. Now we're reformulating what the, what the proposal is tonight.
Sorry, which change had we made tonight?
We've talked about different timeframes. We've talked about how, what kind of storage there would be.
There's nothing in the proposal about how it's stored. And I think we had agreed on three years previously.
Well, I heard several people say one year tonight.
I, I think that last, at the last meeting, Ann, you're right. I think we had spoken about three years, but that's not a settled issue. Jeff, when you send a note to these boards, are you telling them this is, what are you telling them? Or are you giving them a blank sheet of paper and just saying, what do you think?
If you'd like to make any comments on this, please.
Okay. As, as it stands with the, what, the three years, I guess, or or just comments? Open, open question?
I, I don't, I don't recall that we actually voted on three years last time.
I, I don't think we did. I think it, you're right.
So I, I said storing media for, for the period of time. I, I didn't say three years or whatever, because we didn't have a vote on.
We discussed up to three years.
We did, but we didn't vote. So what I'm suggesting is that we make a vote on a specific proposal and then send it back out to the committees for their comments.
My recollection was that we did in fact make a vote to ask Ann to make the changes that we discussed in the meeting and send those out to you guys. So we didn't specifically, I don't think that we specifically voted and made a motion to change it to three years, but I believe that we did ask Ann to make those changes to the document and send it out to you.
And then to be reread today.
Yeah. So add the same effect. We certainly weren't going to be sending that original permanent storage document to the other boards.
I'm just looking at the minutes from your last meeting and there, there's not a formal vote. It says here that, that the last thing that was proposed is Mr. Bowman proposed that the board get the opinion of town council and do a full reading of the revised policy at, at tonight's meeting.
Right.
The revised policy.
Where does that leave us with this now? I mean, then obviously the boards were given the opportunity. Sarah's got her hand up.
Sarah.
To the rest of my knowledge, neither the ZBA nor the Finance Committee was provided with this proposal.
You will be.
Thanks. Look forward to it.
And Sarah, it was my mistake to include the FinCom in that.
No, we shall.
Because it's basically quasi judicial boards. So can we get a clear proposal for me to send out? Because I just checked my email and I never received a clear proposal from Ann.
I will, I, I have it in front of me. I, I will change it from its current red line form to the proposal. As I understand, we've agreed. I would like to hear at least a consensus on whether it's, whether one year is sufficient.
I would like to make a motion to change the existing policy regarding retention of Board of Selectment records to include.
Board of Selectmen or all?
The Board of, the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Health, the Conservation Commission, the ZBA and the Historic District Commission. Each of which will be responsible for recording their meetings. And that meeting recording will be retained for one year.
Is for audio and video or just audio?
Each of which will record, video record their meetings.
Thank you. Second.
I've lost the thread without seeing it in front of me. I'm having trouble keeping this in one spot. Where, specifically where the changes again?
Timeframe is one.
I, I think Jeff proposed an entirely different policy on preserving recordings. And I think, I don't, I could probably reproduce it, but I'm not sure I can.
And you want to share your screen on this?
Yeah, sure.
So I think, I think the basic concept here is Jeff is proposing a retention policy for recordings of meetings for these five boards, five or six, six boards. That these six boards will retain their meeting recordings for a year. And that we can craft the language itself to meet that goal, but that's the concept that he's advancing.
And, and I think that's the concept that we had. Except that he wants them to maintain it, maintain them themselves rather than being maintained by the town administration.
I accept that as an amendment.
Let me share. I, I just checked and when I said share screen, the host is disabled participant screen sharing, which makes it hard.
It's not disabled on my end.
You need to make her a co-host.
No, because the, because the folks from all my projects were a co-host. Did you make them co-hosts? I made Peter a co-host, yeah. Okay. I just made him a co-host. Alright, thank you.
Okay.
Ting, 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 here. Okay. Yes, that's. And we would change three years to one year.
And from both voice and video, just voice?
I, I would prefer video.
Which is just, yeah, yes, but we don't need both voice and video, I don't think. Video includes audio.
No, it doesn't.
No.
Okay.
There are two places where it says three years.
Yep, and I'll find the other one.
Yeah. Right there. This is exactly the exercise we went through last time where we had, we made these changes in the meeting.
And this is what was sent around? Well, I mean, the previous iteration.
The last thing I sent around, I'm sorry, I got involved and forgot to send around the last, the version that went from permanently to three years. And the changes that what had been sent around was, was permanently.
So are we also changing where the recordings will be stored?
No, this says what these recordings will be stored in Town Hall.
Right. But when you, you said that the, before I thought you had said that the boards were responsible for.
I did not. You didn't specify Town Hall. So this is fine. This language is fine. Let's just make the changes into the, make the changes on this proposal so that they're not in track changes and the language is just the language.
Right.
And you had provided this to us at our, on the January 20th meeting. I'm looking at a printed out copy. So all we've changed is three years to one year. Everything else is the same.
No, I, I, I have a concern here, Ann, about, oh no, okay.
And, and the track changes had been accepted. Or at least in, in my copy, there are no mark outs.
So this will be sent out and we're talking about reviewing it at the next meeting.
As a final read.
Right. And the 21st is President's Day, so we'll be meeting on the 22nd.
We will actually be meeting on Washington's birthday instead of President's Day.
Okay, here we go. Just want to make sure I'm putting the right notes down. Thank you.
Ann, I know you, you find language important as I do. And both the second and the third paragraph of this start with other boards, commissions and committees. Or other boards and committees. I think that maybe.
And you would like them lower, either uppercase or lowercase, but not very.
No, 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 I'm not worried about that. I'm worried about specifying which do not have independent authority to may choose.
Yep.
Because it's a little confusing as to whether the boards and committees may choose the ones that have independent authority to constrain actions or affect property.
No.
Just copy and paste it. Are you stopping there?
I think, I, I think copying another the whole, the whole section about their authority is going to make it impossible to read. And I think no such authority, no such independent authority is, is more readable.
I think that's fine. And then just fix the little O slash B thing on the other, oh, boards.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, boards.
Like Oh Brother, that was a movie.
Okay, if we can get a clean copy of that, then I will send that copy out to the boards.
Okay.
Okay. Alright, so.
For the final reading that they know we need to know by the 20th.
Right, right. But now I'm going to go back and make my motion again. That my motion is with the changes as written during this meeting, the Board to the Policy on Preserving Recordings of Board and Committee Meetings. I moved that the Policy on Preserving Recordings of Board and Committee Meetings as written be adopted by the Board's Selectmen. With the second reading on our next meeting.
Two, twenty-two, twenty-two. I second that.
Okay. Question, Jeff. So are we adopting this now before running it by these other boards who may have input that we may take under advisement and want to perhaps modify this?
Right. We can, we can. Right, we can, we can, we can modify this.
Yeah.
On our second reading.
We can, but the, the, the decision that we made last meeting. Was that we were going to hold off triggering, um, the, the, that second reading phase until after the. Boards, the Quasi, Quasi Judicial Boards had had an opportunity to weigh in.
Mm-hmm.
Alright.
Should, since the motion has been made and seconded, do we just go around and vote no at this point, or do we vote yes to this and amend later if need be?
My concern is Eli, and I stated this before, that this will drag on. And we're setting a deadline for those boards to weigh in. That the second reading of this policy will be on two twenty-two. And if they, and if they wish to make comments. To address those comments in writing to the chair.
I'm, I'm okay with that Jeff, so long as you, and, and we will make amendments as needed per whatever comments you might have.
We may or may not.
It may or may not, yes, make amendments for, for your comments, yes. As long as you put that in, in your email, it's, I'm okay.
What I would put in my email is that we would consider. Your comments at our second hearing of this, a second reading of this. Proposal policy.
I understand you want to kind of push this along and that's, that's fine.
But that's, that's, that's my intent.
Alright, so we get to that second reading sooner rather than later.
And we move on to other, other policies. So, so the vote before us, and you could vote it down if you want to, is. Um, that the board. That the Board of Selectmen adopts the revised. Policy on retention of recordings of meetings.
So. Some of those boards. Don't have any meetings scheduled in between now and that date. Schedule.
Fine, I withdraw my motion.
I don't, because I seconded, I don't think that. Can you withdraw it?
Vote it down, let's go to the vote. Eli.
Uh, no.
Anne.
No.
John.
Oh.
Becky.
No.
The chair votes yes. Okay, let's move on.
When are we going to come back to this?
Next time.
Okay.
I will still tell them that we would like to have their comments as soon as possible, no, we won't come back to it next time because Eli. Said that there are people, there are boards that don't vote, that don't meet between now and then. Uh, already have their agendas set for a meeting that may occur between now and then, so.
So, if, if I might suggest, you could. Make a motion to declare the edit you made tonight as the first reading. For this new, for this amended policy.
That's what I was trying to do.
And that you will take it up. For second reading at your first meeting in March.
But that was already voted down, so we can't revisit that unless somebody else wants to make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
Can I make a motion?
Everybody, everybody can make a motion.
I move that we accept the version of the policy on retention of records. Recordings, um. As a first reading and that we will have a second reading when we have heard from the boards affected.
Okay.
I can second that, that makes sense. Are we constrained by time?
And if they don't ever get back to us, we never get to do this second reading.
Well, then we'll come back and we'll modify our decision.
Can we say at the next, at the first meeting in March? That's a month away, that should give people. Time.
That is probably enough time, that should be enough time.
Okay, I accept that as a friendly amendment.
So March 7th would be that day.
Hmm. So, change that to three seven.
John, you seconded it?
I, I guess I was the second on that, now I'll accept that a bit, but. Yeah, all of these, all of these boards meet at least once during a month.
Okay, so any further discussion? Okay, uh, roll call vote, Anne?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Eli?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Sarah?
So, ZBA meets on the third Wednesday of every month. And I'm not sure that gives us sufficient time to vote on this before your next meeting.
That's almost 10 days from now, Sarah.
Yeah, right. But. It's, it's, I think we need more time.
See where you are, and if you need to push it out, you will, but target the 7th and see how, how people do.
The Historic District Commission meets on the 4th Thursday. But I will say there are always one or two months during the year when there are no applications and they don't meet, now I can't. Say what. February, whatever it is, 24th is gonna bring, but.
Well, even if they don't have any applications.
They can still meet for this.
That's right.
BOH is meeting this Thursday, but they've already set their agenda. Um. They would then meet on the 24th. Planning Board meets on the 28th. And on the 14th.
And the 14th, right.
I'm, I'm not sure, CONCON meets on Wednesdays. Is that alternating with the ZBA?
I don't know, they, they do every, um. Shoot. It'll be three weeks, they meet, things every three weeks.
CONCON meets next Tuesday, the 15th.
Thank you, CONCON.
Sixteenth? No, 15th, okay.
Tuesday, the 15th.
Next Tuesday would be the 15th, CONCON, is that correct?
Yeah, copy that.
Thank you, Steve. Okay. Moving on. Uh, consent agenda. We have minutes, we have lots of minutes. Um. I believe we have minutes for all of December and all of January. You have your changes in on those minutes?
Yep. Um, I didn't know where to send changes to the minutes for 118.
I, I, yeah, I have that.
Send them, send them to, send them to the office. To Greg's office.
Okay.
Okay.
Um. Yeah.
Okay, um, we have a license for the mooring. We have Rare Disease Day, Chain of Light, February 28th. Um, and we have the Historic Standpipe Foundation Restoration. Um, we're Dan Senicles. Looking permission to work with the Historic Society to raise funds privately to restore the old foundation for the original standpipe that was on Powerhouse Hill.
Has that already been, um. Discussed with CONCON?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Let's pull that out for a second. The other three, the other three items, the BOs minutes, the license for the mooring and, uh, the chain of light, any calls on those? Okay, so I'd like a motion to accept the con, the consent agenda.
Done, moved.
Second.
Okay, um, in favor, Anne?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Eli?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, now Eli, you've got the Historic Standpipe Foundation Restoration, your question is. Whether that has been vetted by CONCON.
Right.
Alright, Steve, are you still there?
Yeah, I, I suspect strongly that we have no wetlands jurisdiction on that, uh, old site. Because it came up before when, uh. Um, Verizon or somebody wanted to build a road up there to, uh, erect a cell tower.
Did have jurisdiction over that.
We did, but only the beginning of the road, not the end of it where it reached the old standpipe.
Ah. Really?
Yeah, just find me a Vernal Pool, Eli.
Yeah, no, I understand.
So should we ask Mr. Senical to, uh, bring this to CONCON for a determination?
He could certainly inquire of Chris Bertoni and she could figure it out in about five minutes.
Yeah, that, that, that's, that's plenty, I'm not asking that he go before CONCON unless he has to. I just wanted to make sure that he wasn't raising money for something that was going to need, have to be vetted by CONCON. Um, and had not yet.
Okay, so, um, I would entertain a motion that Dan Senical. Uh, may proceed with work with the Historical Society to raise private funds. After checking with. Uh. Chris Bertoni regarding any. CONCON. Issues with that property.
Would you like a motion that the Board of Selectmen requests that Dan Senic, Mr. Senical. Confer with Chris Bertoni of the Conservation Commission, um, before proceeding with fundraising?
Second.
I, I would go further than that and to say, to determine whether there is. CONCON jurisdiction in this area. Because he could go have his discussion and then go do what he wanted to do.
Yeah, but not Dan. Okay, let me try again. The Board of Selectmen. Request that Mr. Senical. I don't know, I'm sorry, I don't know how to say that he gets. Christopher Tony's blessing without saying what the blessing is, and that sounds to me like he has to get a certific, certificate of non-applicability.
I should review it, review it with her.
Yeah, if he reviews it with her and decides to ignore her advice, as Jeff has suggested.
Would you?
Would just be that he'd stub his toe in a major way, so I don't think it's necessary for us to, to go further than Anne's original, um. Motion. And I stand by my second.
Further discussion? Roll call vote, Becky?
Yes.
Eli?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Okay, town administrators.
Okay.
Can I, can I ask for a two-minute bio break?
Sure.
Unless it's gonna be really short.
I can be, I can be very brief, but it's up to.
Okay, I, 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 I can, I can stand another five minutes.
I don't, I don't want you to suffer, so. So COVID, uh, trends are encouraging, hopefully no new variant gets thrown our way. You know, Board of Health will be looking at, um. Issue of the mask mandate, probably at the meeting this coming Thursday, and let's discuss it and see, um. See where we should go next with that, they held a local clinic today and have a few more lined up. I want to encourage people to get their boosters. We're, we're sort of stuck at around just over 50% of people getting the third shot. Did well on everyone getting two shots, but we're, we're not there with the boosters and, um. People really do need to get the boosters to be, to be protected, so want to encourage, encourage people to do that. Um, uh, we have the rapid testing kits, we've distributed about 500 of those to. Uh, not only to staff, but also to, to folks who are in greatest need of those kits. And the school is also going to be participating in the new state program where, where students are given the rapid test kits. So, uh, stay tuned, but, uh, hoping that as, uh, as winter wears away, the long-term variant wears away as well. Um, second item is, uh, the transit oriented development, the housing choice law that was passed last year. Uh, it's been quite a bit of chatter about that around town, a lot of comments, a lot of, um, questions about that. Um, it, what the new law states is that communities with a commuter rail, like a rail station like we have. There would be a, um. A strong encouragement for us to develop some new zoning that allows multifamily housing by right within a half mile of that station. Um, the density is, minimum density is, is 15 units per acre, which is actually lower than our current density that we allow. Um, in our general district, which is the area currently around the station. Um, the difference being the by right use for multifamily, we don't currently allow by right multifamily. Um, so that would be our biggest potential change. Um, communities have a choice whether or not to do this, if they, if we choose not to do it, we forego. Um. Free major funding areas, grant sources, the Mass Works, uh, program. Um, their housing choice program and what they call local, um, local capital projects. Um, the, the most impactful one of those three is probably the Mass Works grants. Uh, we've received grants under Mass Works for. Um, dredging in the past, we were hoping to do that in the future, we've talked about Mass Works potentially. In relationship to sewer and water extensions to, um, to the LCD. In relationship to sewer and water extensions to, um, to the LCD. So, um, we have a couple of years to, uh, decide on this, uh, the end of twenty twenty-four. Is when the deadline is to adopt, uh, potentially new zoning regulations, the, the guidelines are still in draft form. And so that's, um, the state is accepting comments from those, uh, on the draft. Guidelines that they are promulgating, what, uh, the first requirement that's coming up is, is for you as a board, you need to hold a. Public meeting on the new, uh, new law and what it means, and, um. And you need to do that by May second. Um, so we could, we could hold that meeting potentially at your, at your March seventh meeting. And, uh, there, there'd be a presentation that, um. Two Ben and I could pull together using some materials that the state has prepared and walk through. Uh, not only our current zoning, but what this proposed zoning would require us to do. So, that is all we need to do between. For, for now, and we still remain eligible, and that would take us through twenty-four. Um, but by the end of twenty-four, we would need to be deciding whether or not to adopt a new, um. By right ability for multifamily housing within a certain area, certain district, a, a new district within. So that's the Transit Orient Development, and we will have more information available. Um, as I say, we can make that presentation at your March seventh meeting. And then lastly, just an update on, on staffing, um, so moving forward with, um, Sue Croft and Sharon George. Being, um, staff in, uh, working with me in my office and, and facilitating all of your needs. And so we'll be moving forward, forward with that combination. And that'll do, do it for tonight for me.
Okay. Um, any questions about? Greg's report? I have a very quick, uh, addition on the COVID that, um. The Board of Health will be taking up. A discussion of our town meeting. Uh, in their meeting, um, is part of their agenda setup for this Thursday. And I would encourage you, we're not having a joint meeting, but if you're interested in that, I would encourage you to attend. This is an advisory meeting for the Board of Health with the Board of Selectmen who has the decision about when town meeting occurs. Okay, um, we have an executive session scheduled tonight. And, um. There's been an objection raised about this executive session in terms of the content of the executive session and how it was posted. And, um. The issues of this executive session are time-sensitive. Um, but we are going to postpone the executive session from tonight, and I would like to take it up on Thursday. Um, so what I need with due consideration for Anne's request to, um. Get out of the seat for a minute, um, is just a clear understanding of what time might be the best. For us to hold a Board of Selectmen Executive Session, not to return to public session. On Thursday. And the, and the issues would be, uh, addressing some of the issues that came up about town council tonight. And, um, also about, um. Non-union contracts. And I think that's it. Oh, and, uh, and a, uh. Union personnel issue.
I can make holes any time of the day on Thursday.
Okay, Becky?
I am going to be flying out at seven o'clock in the morning and will not be available until. Probably about twelve thirty.
Okay. John?
I'm pretty flexible, Jeff.
Anne?
Anytime Thursday.
Okay, Greg, what about your schedule?
Yeah, so I, I need to leave at twelve thirty.
Well, if you all have to do it, you know, if, if, you can get the majority of people and, and I can't make it. That, that's, it does need to get done.
Okay, uh, Greg, what about Friday?
I'm sorry, I'm not available Friday.
Okay.
Could we make it very early on Thursday?
What time are you leaving, Becky?
My flight, my flight departs at seven AM.
How about five AM, man?
That doesn't get back into our plan.
There, the, the, the slight. It is not a direct, I do have a layover where, um, but I don't know how much time this is going to require. I have a layover if it goes to plan. From about eight thirty, and then my next flight departs at ten, so I don't know if that helps.
That's right in the middle of the Board of Health meeting.
Yep, yep.
What if we went for, what if we went? What if we went for nine thirty? I don't know where we stand in the Board of Health's agenda. They don't put timings on their agenda, um. And the indoor mask mandate precedes the town menu discussion, town meeting discussion. Um, so that's probably not going to work. You said, you said you're, you touched down at eight thirty and you go back up at ten. So you're probably only available from like. Nine to nine forty-five. I think that's right smack in the middle of when we'll be in the board.
Yeah, yeah.
Do, do you want to try for Monday, or is that too late?
I'm, I'm working, however, I will, I will. Make. I'll take an extended lunch or breakfast or tea or whatever. If Monday works for other people.
Monday for other people?
I have something I'd like to be doing Monday morning.
John, Eli?
I can make holes anytime on Monday.
Eli? Excuse me, John?
John, you're muted.
I, I can do Monday, Monday evening is probably tough, but Monday anytime during the day is fine.
Yes, Monday.
Yeah, but Monday. I've got an open schedule on Monday.
Becky, call it. What time?
Anne, what time is your thing over?
Probably not until. One thirty.
Shall we say two? And how long are we thinking?
An hour.
Okay, two o'clock? Two to three?
John?
Yep, that's good.
Okay, two o'clock on Monday then.
Okay.
Alright.
Excellent, I'm just putting it in right now.
Alright, then I will entertain a, uh, motion to adjourn.
Done, moved.
Exa, yeah.
Second.
Roll call vote, John?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Eli?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes, please.
Chair votes yes, thank you very much, thank you, Gail, thank you, Greg.
Already, good night, everybody.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.